Good evening. Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street. I'm here to speak to the mill levy increase for the Jefferson County Public Libraries, and specifically to encourage council to support that, to publicly support that mill levy increase, and to encourage your citizens to do so as well. When we think about the services that we provide as a community to our citizens, the library is a core service. It's an infrastructure that we can't do without. And when we look at the fact that we haven't supported them with the mill levy increase for 29 years, and the kinds of services they provide today are radically different than they were 29 years ago. High-tech needs, demand has increased. It's the kind of service that we can't do without, and we can't, as a Jefferson County community, let alone as a Wheat Ridge community, continue to let it languish in the backwaters. So please consider the report you were here tonight, and I encourage you to support it publicly and to your citizens. Thank you.
Good evening. Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. And I am here to give you my thoughts about the number four smoking ordinance. I was at another meeting where parents and other people talked about their concerns with smoking in parks, playgrounds, and open spaces. And I just feel that we need to be very careful about who we give the power to, and that we be more equal and compromise. If you take away every venue, open or closed, where people can or cannot smoke, I feel that you're being unfair. And if we're concerned about the children, as you must with the TV, turn it off or turn the channel. And the food that we eat, good or bad, choices that we make, same goes with smoking. Remove them from it, take them away, turn it off, but not make it unequal for all the citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to take the opportunity to, again, thank you for taking time to work through the smoking ordinance. And sorry, it's Jennifer Yates, 3700 Miller Street. So after walking the parade at the Carnation Festival, we went to the festival for a couple hours before the fireworks. And I really liked the way it was set up. The rides and stuff seemed to be a little bit higher end, so I think it was a really nice job with the festival this year. The one black eye was, however, that there was the smell of smoke and a lot of marijuana, pot smoke, everywhere you walk throughout the carnival. So it doesn't make for a very family-friendly event when you have that, so I really hope you will consider that when you're looking at the smoking ordinance. And then the second thought is on the smoke and vapor patios. I think that we need to consider, and the business owners need to consider, the added liability. If you're allowing somebody to smoke and vape on the patio, vaping in particular, they could be vaping marijuana, which public consumption of marijuana is not legal. And so your servers, in addition to having to determine whether somebody's had enough to drink or not, may have to consider whether somebody is also intoxicated with marijuana and then being served alcohol on top of that. And I think there is a huge liability there that could be put on business owners. So again, something to think about. I do, one other thing is that there is also an initiative for a Denver ballot measure to allow public smoking in restaurants and whatnot. And I have just a page here about that to give you a little bit more information, so I think we need to take that into consideration when looking at the ordinance, because unfortunately, it is something that may affect us here. Thank you.
Lori Odom, 11490 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I am a nearly 40-year resident of Wheat Ridge and representing the Breathe Easy Wheat Ridge Coalition. Thank you very much for agreeing at the prior study session here on July 20th to an ordinance draft prohibiting vaping in all places where smoke, have a smoke-free law, and also including other recreation areas, and parks, and city events, and transit waiting areas in that draft. We very much appreciate your consideration of that and putting that in the draft ordinance. At this time, we respectfully ask you to extend smoke and vapor-free areas to retail tobacco businesses, a 25-foot zone around all public entrances, and to all, and all patios and outdoor seating areas, even if they're not adjacent to a public entrance. The reason for these additional requests are to protect residents, visitors, and workers from exposure to tobacco smoke and vaped aerosols. As you know, studies have shown that tobacco smoke, even outdoors, is harmful. Scientific evidence is mounting as well, that aerosols emitted by vaping at standard temperatures, although probably not as harmful as tobacco smoke, still contain toxic chemicals that are inhaled by bystanders. Moreover, the liquid being vaped is completely unregulated for safety, and there is no requirement for disclosing the ingredients. There's ample evidence that at least a 25-foot no-smoking perimeter is needed to prevent tobacco smoke from re-entering a building and exposing the employees and customers inside. We want to protect the hundreds of individuals, young and old, who walk in and out of businesses, such as grocery stores, fast-food chains, restaurants, exercise facilities, and the list goes on and on. We should set this example as a social norm, especially for impressionable children and teens. Research shows that prohibiting tobacco use in public places reduces youth initiation. A survey of households surrounding Wheat Ridge in 2012 found that individuals from over 20,000 households would be more likely to visit Wheat Ridge restaurants and bars if all patios were smoke-free. The use of electronic smoking devices by youth tripled from 2013 to 2014. These ESDs are unfortunately readily available to underage youth. In addition to nicotine, youth are discreetly vaping marijuana and other drugs. I believe that it's incumbent upon us, as stewards of the next generation, to give especially the large numbers of youth who don't have adequate parental guidance, as many positive opportunities and examples as possible, and not enable their involvement in activities that can harm them and others. Your support of these measures is greatly appreciated. By doing so, you are countering any perception of Wheat Ridge becoming a marijuana-vaping destination, and rather are promoting and fostering our growing image as a healthy and family-friendly destination. Thank you. And I have some information.
Thank you, Council, and Mayor Joyce J. for the work that you've done already in July. I'm sorry I missed that meeting. I'm sorry. Teresa Mickiewicz, my last name is M-I-C-K-I-E-W-I-C-Z. I live at 48th and Uppam in District Two. So thank you for your time. I'd like to start out with a quote, and you may have heard it already, by Mark Twain. And he stated that actually quitting smoking is really easy. He'd done it thousands of times. And, you know, I can relate, because that was me. And when I was trying to quit, I was not laughing at the irony of that statement. And when I see our youth smoking, I just wish I could share that experience with them, that desperateness of trying to quit. And not to mention the years that I've taken off my life. So I guess that's kind of the context that I'm bringing up. I'm concerned about Wheat Ridge being a nice place to live, and that we want to improve our image, and I desperately want my property values to go up. But I'm really here on behalf of the youth, because in the late '90s, the master settlement agreement where the state sued the tobacco industry essentially to recoup Medicare and Medicaid costs for health, for tobacco-related healthcare charges, they were also required to open up their file cabinets. And at that time, it wasn't an email account. It was an actual file cabinet. And they revealed what we knew, was that the tobacco industry targets the vulnerable, and that includes especially our children. So if you could just fast-forward then to 2009, and the FDA was granted regulatory authority over tobacco, the first thing that happened was they pulled candy-flavored tobacco products from the shelves. Because we knew that that is how they recruit their next generation of smokers. That's how they make their money. They're not immoral tobacco companies. They're amoral. They're, they don't have morals. They're beholden to their stakeholders. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not attacking them. I'm just stating the facts. So in 2009, flavored tobacco was pulled from the shelves. And then in 2013, you may or may not know that the Denver area became a test market for a product called Blue. And that was on TV, you know, "Let's take our freedom back." And this liquid nicotine delivery system is not covered under those FDA rules. So if you go into a vapor shop, you'll see Blue Raspberry, Hawaiian Punch, Pina Colada. And this is their workaround. This is how they're recruiting the next generation of tobacco users to, yes. Okay. All right. No, I can end it. That was it. And so I just hope that you'll consider strengthening the ordinance so that we don't have vapor shops, and we don't have hookah shops, because they do a really good job of getting our kids. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynette Nambe. I live at 2977 Reed Street. N-A-M-B-A. I'm a resident and a parent. I want to thank council for the discussion and decision reached at the last study session. I know you didn't reach conclusions or consensus on tobacco shops, patios, and entryways, so I'd like to briefly touch on these topics. For entryways, it's about ensuring that the public does not have to walk through a wall of smoke when entering the grocery store or other Wheat Ridge business. For outdoor seating areas in tobacco shops, all workers deserve to breathe air free of dangerous chemicals in tobacco smoke and vaporizers. Working in a tobacco shop or on a patio should not mean breathing toxic air for an eight-hour shift. Workers deserve the same protection we receive in these council chambers and what bar and casino workers enjoy every day. Tonight and in the future, you may hear opposition from vapor store owners. They will say their primary purpose is to help people quit and to save lives, and that they need to allow customers to sample their products in order to help them quit. In response to that, I would like to make the following points. There are thousands of businesses, such as convenience stores, successfully selling tobacco and vapor products across Colorado, and they do not allow sampling in their store. There's nothing that we're asking for that would prevent a vapor or tobacco business from selling vapor devices or counseling people on how they can quit with the device. People can still use them to quit. It should be noted, however, that vaporizers are not FDA-approved quit-smoking devices, nor are they regulated for safety. If a customer needs to sample in order to purchase, they can go outside, just like they would any other business. The truth is, as, these clips from Facebook pages, and this is the single sheet I just handed out, vapor lounges in the metro area show, it's more about the glamorization and promotion of electronic smoking devices, and at times, also the promotion of marijuana vaporizing. We don't know of any vapor lounges in town, so let's act now. And as you can see from this one, the stapled one that I handed out, "The marijuana vaporizing world, which could get even bigger if Denver's marijuana vaping bar ballot measure passes openly, promotes their ability to conceal use in public places. We don't want vapor shops and lounges or patios to become marijuana-use destinations, creating headaches for businesses and law enforcement." Thank you again for your work and your time.
Pull your mic to your, close to you and push the button until you have any lights on.
Neither one of us had our mics on. Donna Walker, Jefferson County Public Library.
All right. Thank you for having me. I have more handouts for you, if you'd like them. These are just the notes. Actually, I'm going to keep that top one. If you want to take notes while I talk, while I do work at the library, I'm the Director for Public Services. I'm here as a volunteer, because I'm talking about a mill levy initiative that we are going to be seeking in the November ballot. So how did we get here? As you heard, it's been since 1986 that we've had a mill levy increase for the library. Demand has exploded. Just five new libraries is one example of the cost increase. And things are different now. Internet is new, not new anymore, 20 years old. And our online library collection is, everything just costs more money, and we're still at this 1986 mill levy. We have fallen farther and farther behind as a library system, and we will need additional revenue to do some catching up. And to get to this 21st century, we're trying to deliver 21st-century library services on a 21st-century budget. So to compound matters, the recession hit us hard. We, for the past seven years, our revenue has been below our 2008 revenues. The cumulative effect of that reduction is that we just have fallen farther behind. And even though the economy is recovering, we're still well below where we were in 2008 in terms of our revenues. And so we've had to make really hard choices to bring our expenses in line with these revenues. We've had to reduce our hours twice. We aren't open enough. That is the largest complaint we get from our residents, is that the library needs to be open more. We are purchasing fewer materials in 2015. Our materials budget is a million dollars a year less than it was in 2008. And we have fewer materials per capita than most of our peer libraries in the country. We've had to lay off staff. We've had almost 70 full-time equivalent positions that we have done away with, and that means not as good of service for our residents. We are also falling behind in technology. This is a chart that shows area library systems and the technologies they have. We do have a couple of 3D printers that we got on a grant now, but otherwise, we just don't have the technologies that other libraries have in the metro area even. We've had to delay repairs on our facilities. In fact, we have $14 million in unfunded capital needs just stacked up in the pipeline. These are actual photos of our libraries. We used to refurbish our libraries every 10 years, but now nearly every library in our system has fallen behind that schedule, and they get a lot of use and a lot of wear and tear. So this chart shows how far below our peers we are in a basket of peers, a comparison. So the green is the 75th percentile. The yellow is the 50th percentile. The red is the 25th percentile. That blue line is Jefferson County Public Library. And these are what we consider our key performance measures: open hours per week, items per capita, our public access computers, our square footage per capita, and our FTEs per 1,000 served. So we feel like this shows how deep the need is, and that we aren't providing a competitive level of library services compared to other libraries in communities like ours. Our library board chair says it is time for us to do something, and has directed us to seek a mill levy increase in 2015. They also directed us to see what the community wants, and if that's what the community wants, and what they want us to do with that revenue. And this is what we heard from the community. We looked at resident surveys. We interviewed people all across the system. We have our customer service surveys. We did polls, and we convened a citizens advisory committee, and we heard what, from them, what we knew for ourselves as well. These are the priorities in the community: to restore our open hours, provide more books and materials, update our technology, repair and refurbish our buildings, and stabilize the long-term finances of the library. So we took all of that input and integrated it into a five-year strategic plan and a 10-year financial forecast. And those top five there are the ones I've mentioned that came up over and over again, where we want to expand our hours and upgrade our technology, et cetera. It really will take us time to recapture some of the, to be more competitive as we were before, when we had a little bit more money. We do intend to put us on a path to excellence with this mill levy, so that we can perform closer to that 75th percentile. It's hard to read on that slide, but that purplish area is, so it's going to cost us $32 million just to catch up. That's what we discovered in our five-year planning cycle. And that one mill increase, from 3.5 to 4.5 mills, will get us there. We can do all those priorities: restore our open hours, repair and refurbish buildings. You see how that breaks down in percentage. And that improving the financial and flexibility and stability of our budget also will allow us to be at the table with a city like Wheat Ridge that's looking to improve services in the city, and comes to the library, might be interested in having a different kind of a library service. This would allow us to have some ability to maneuver when we're brought to the table and asked for participation. We also did a 10-year financial forecast, and, so that we would be sure not to run out of money and have to go back to the voters. And so that's what that, the 4.5 will do for us. So here's what it costs for this additional mill. It will cost the average homeowner about $1.95 a month, which is the price of a king-size candy bar. So we think that's a reasonable amount to pay for what we would get. We feel like it's a great return on investment, so that we can get to that more competitive level of library services, the 21st-century library, as we're here in the year 2015. We do believe that the time is right. We believe we really are going to be successful. We're optimistic. We built our plan based on resident feedback. We are giving them, the community, what they want. We're not being greedy. We're not trying to fix everything at once. We have a measured strategic plan that will do all these things. First thing first, restoring open hours. And we do have broad community support. In our most recent poll, when informed about the situation of the library, the financial situation, and the kind of state of the library, we had more than 60% of the residents say they would support an increase for the library. And we do believe these are exciting days for the library, and we would like your help. So here's how you can help. There's an email list that I can, that you can, actually, I can get your emails and maybe see if that would be okay. Share what you know about the library's challenges with your constituents, your friends, families, neighbors. Advocate for the campaign. Donate. Sign a resolution. I did bring a resolution. If you'd like to have a copy of the resolution, I don't know if you all want a copy or just one. We've got tons. We've brought plenty. And then I also brought the ballot language, if you're interested, and a white paper on the advantages, the economic advantages of having a strong library in a community, and what it means in terms of economic development. So I have that as well. I'll just pass it all around. You can keep what you like. So that's, oh.
One more.
So this is the campaign's website. You can go and find the information that you need and participate. We would love to have the support of the Wheat Ridge City Council in resolving to support the library publicly, and participating as you can.
Thank you, Donna. Questions from Ms. Kristy Davis down there?
Thank you for your presentation. So I have just a couple quick questions. So here it says $1.95 per average-priced home in Jefferson County. What's the average-priced home?
Okay, let me get, so I'm, $298,000. Is that, do I have that right? Yeah, about, what, okay.
All right. And then my other question was, how does the mill compare with other counties, like Denver County, Douglas County?
Or the, like, maybe the funding per capita?
The funding, yeah. How does that compare?
Well, for example, Arapaho County's funding per capita for libraries is $90 per capita. We're at under 45. Douglas County is $67 per capita. So Jefferson County is the second highest household income, and we are funding as well below that. And Denver passed their mill for their, I don't know the dollars per capita, but I can get that.
Okay. And then just one final question. Is there, as far as Wheat Ridge, I know we've tried, we've worked really hard to try to improve our library, and, you know, it's stuff that is not, is probably on your list of many. Any thoughts, any ideas of where that falls on your list of improvements and what those look like for Wheat Ridge?
Well, we know that in our, for storing open hours, that Wheat Ridge has included every one of our libraries. This included in getting our hours, at least back to where they were before the recession, and then upgrading the technology. All of that comes, we do it system-wide, so that we don't have some of our libraries, other than Golden, which we've remodeled as a showcase, to show people what the library of the future looks like in Jefferson County. We would have everybody on a schedule to be refurbished, and then whatever opportunities come up for Wheat Ridge, we would be open to that conversation when we had some flexibility in our budget to respond.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald?
Hi. I certainly agree that you're underfunded. But do I remember correctly that the county commissioners did not allow you to become your own special district, separate district?
That didn't go for any vote.
So you are still funded by the county commissioners?
Yes.
And can you tell us, and have they refused to give you extra money?
So we have this 3.5 mill, a voter-approved mill in 1986, and then the commissioners set- So we have this 3.5 mil, the voter-approved mil in 1986, and then the commissioners set our mil every year and they have lots of other competing interests. So in these intervening years, 29 years, we've gotten that 3.5 mils three times. Every other time it has been less than that. And so we have been at the table with them and have told them about our concerns about our funding and we're going to the vote to try to get 4.5 and hope to be funded at that 4.5.
So in essence, you're going around the county commissioners in order to get this? Is that right?
No, they will continue to have control over our budget and our mil by state statute. What we hope to show them is that the community is willing to support us up to this higher level and that they will fund us at this higher level.
So you, do you have any funding sources other than your mil levies?
We have some grants. We have a foundation.
Okay, but nothing from the county in terms of their normal budget?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So if this would pass, what would your total mil levy be?
4.5 for us.
4.5, okay, thank you.
Mr. Zutulio?
So the concern I have with this, and I hate to be the downer all the time, but the county has control of your budget. If this passes 4.5, there's no reason that they have to give you the 4.5. Is that correct?
That's correct. One of the things we're including in the ballot language is debruising. So taking that, us out of the Tabor cap. So we hope that that would be an incentive for us to be fully funded.
You said you were a volunteer on the board?
I am an employee, but I'm here tonight on my own time.
A few years ago, we discussed, I met with your executive director, who might that be again?
Pam Nessler.
Right. She had told me that in fact, instead of adding a library to Wheat Ridge, that Jefferson County Library was going to take the library completely out of Wheat Ridge and move it over to Edgewater because Edgewater was where they wanted to be. And we had talked to the Jefferson County Library about putting one at 38th and Uppam, 44th and Uppam, 38th and Wadsworth, taking over the Wheat Ridge 5 through 8 building when there was some things going on by selling that building. So at that time, this, the talk was Wheat Ridge wasn't even going to have its own library that based on the distances and on Edgewater, Edgewater was going to get this new library around 20th and DePew. So I don't see where this, this mil levy going to 4.5 guarantees you any more money if the county commissioners don't want to fund it. And secondly, I don't see where it benefits the city of Wheat Ridge because at the time, Pam said Wheat Ridge wasn't on the radar screen. At that time, we were also looking, trying to have public and, public-private partnerships and the Jefferson County Library Board still wasn't interested in those locations. So I don't see where this benefits the city. And I think even Mr. Goff and I had talked to Pam a few times about this and everything fell through and they were all public-private partnerships. And they kept saying, well, Wheat Ridge folks just have to use Lakewood or Avada. That's, that's where you have to go for your library services, the Miller or the new one in Avada. So unless you can get a guarantee from the county commissioners, I mean, I think it was, it's a better idea, like Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, that you go to be at your own district and you get your own funding and then you get your full 4.5 or your 3.5 and that could be part of your district ballot question that you will be a, a totumus from the county so they can't hold that e-hostage every year. So that's just my perception on it.
Did you want me to respond or?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So we did a, kind of a feasibility study about becoming a district before we embarked on the rest of this conversation with the community and just did a study of what it would cost us to separate, just what's the dollar amount. And it was a lot. It was quite a bit to just become separate and then the annual cost because it's a little bit of a bargain for us in terms of annual costs to stay as part of the county, just looking at it financially and not looking at the politics or anything. And so our board made the decision to go this direction in terms of looking for additional funding rather than separating from the county. So what we are optimistically hoping is that if the voters say yes, please fund our library at this level, the commissioners will hear that message.
But there's no guarantee that they will?
There is no guarantee.
And there's no guarantee that Wheat Ridge would see any better or different or new library in the city of Wheat Ridge either?
Not in terms of a new library. However, what this would do is put us in a position to have that conversation because conditions change all the time for organizations, municipalities, public places, whatever. And, and, and so I wouldn't make any promises. I wouldn't make any guarantees. All I know is I've seen it happen, that priorities shift, somebody comes to the table with a different idea and we have to be able to maneuver. And right now, we can't maneuver. We don't have anything to offer back. We can't offer to build a library right now.
Is it possible for me to add to this?
Yeah, please. So there, there's a little bit of a reasonableness that the amount of increase in mil levy could be directed to the library. But what I'm hearing is that the current library, like all the libraries, will be brought up to, to the level of equipment, the level of service, all the libraries will. I'm not hearing anything about closing a library here.
No, that's not.
And I've not heard that. And if anything, I've heard more encouragement the other direction of actually being able to staff a better library here. And can I get your name, please?
Rebecca Winning. I'm also a volunteer for the campaign jury.
We've met.
Yes, we've met. And I know that in the past, because we were so financially strapped, we were not able to contemplate a lot of things. And I don't remember all of the details around the 44th and Wadsworth, but there were some other things about that property that made it less than ideal for the library. That's all ancient history. More recently, we've had conversations with Patrick and with Joyce about the 38th, the main street, the new main street on 38th.
38th and Uppam?
Yeah. And one of the things that we're hoping this would do is give us the financial flexibility to consider those things. We're very interested, if you take the economic development white paper, everyone who's doing an infill development or transit-oriented development or around the county is interested in having a library as an anchor because we bring in so many visitors and then you get the, you know, the benefit of that, the surrounding retail and other things. And it is a model that we would love to contemplate and we'd love to entertain those discussions. So, and to your point of the commissioners can't, we can't, can't guarantee that they'll give us all the money. We hope that we will have voter support when our, our board has committed to ask for what the library really needs. And we hope that we'll have voter, voter support for that. And the one thing I can say is any mil levy that's collected, that will come directly to the library. So we're hopeful that we'll at least get enough of a bump to be able to put the library back on track.
So my point was that 38th and Uppam project would be a 15,000-square-foot facility, correct? Is that what you're looking at?
We don't know. I mean, we'd have to talk with, we have to get specific with you about what you're thinking. And right now, we're thinking about a smaller footprint. Big libraries are not, you know, we don't need big libraries everywhere in the county right now. We're thinking more of like a 10,000-square-foot kind of footprint. But again, that would all be subject to negotiation when your plans are in place and we have a better idea of what that whole development is going to look like. And again, while we can't promise that yes, we'll have enough money to do it immediately, we'll have the opportunity to put it into our plan and see if we can't manage it.
Well, the, the 10,000-square-foot footprint is based on what the developer wants to do on the entire site, correct? Because there's part of that developer would be part of 38th and Uppam. Have you been talking to them about 38th and Uppam and Wazee Partners?
Yeah, we've talked to them about numerous sites, but I think 10,000 was their new model that we've been talking about for years with even Pam Nessler. And I think that's kind of the new model they're talking about, but.
Yeah. And, and again, it would have to be in the context of the whole plan, which we haven't really gotten in. We haven't had the luxury of having a detailed conversation about it because we haven't had any money to even think about.
Well, that's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not trying to monopolize this, but it was, public-private partnerships, you should be able to get a lot of that funding through TIPS, PIFs, SDEP. And so my point is, I don't still see how this mil levy increase would help you put a new library in the city if you're keeping at 3.5%. If the county's not going to give it back to you. That's all I'm making the point.
Yeah. Well, and that, then that becomes, you know, incumbent on the voters to encourage the county commissioners to support the library at the level that the voters are asking for.
Could I get your name again?
I'm sorry, Rebecca Winning.
Rebecca. Oh, I know you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Are there other questions? Certainly, Genevieve?
I'm just curious, the other counties here that you mentioned, how do they operate? Are they a separate district or are they in, similar to what you do as far as your setup?
So Pike's Peak, Douglas County, Arapahoe, they're districts. Denver is city and county.
Similar to what Jeffco is, right?
Well, actually, they're a city library. So they're funded through city taxes that.
Yeah, they're not their own, they're governed by the city.
They're governed by the city.
Okay.
And I think, isn't High Plains a district too?
High Plains is a district as well. Adams County is a district.
So they are, okay. Okay. And then my next question is, when you talk about one of your goals being increased and updated technology, what does that mean exactly? Does it mean more computers available to the public? Because when I go to the library, I see, you know, people at every single computer and I think we do have a large segment of the population who are not, don't have availability to computers inside their homes. And I think that just sheer numbers of computers at the library available to the public is a really important thing. And so I didn't know if that is one of the things you meant.
It means, it means that and more. It depends on the community. A community like Wheat Ridge where the light, the computers are full all the time, we'd say, how else can we provide that service? Laptops for checkout, better bandwidth, you know, as many computers as we can fit in this space. So there are lots of different ways to provide that access because lots of people actually don't, as you say, have a computer at home and you, sometimes you send them home with a tablet and they don't understand they don't have wireless. So there are lots of things. So we can provide hotspots for checkout. Libraries all across the country are doing all those things that, you know, we are poised to do the minute we have the funding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Urban?
I'd like if you could just kind of talk a little bit about the impact that the homeless population has on your services and what sort of other, I wouldn't necessarily call them ancillary, but things you might not expect that the library has to undertake that, like for instance, the homeless population places a huge burden on the library system. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, I just was meeting with our manager in charge of special populations and homeless services today about some of those challenges and our approach. It impacts us every day. It impacts simple things like, you know, do I dare say, bedbugs and upholstery cleaning, you know, people who have nowhere else to go for the day. So we do whatever we can to make it an inviting and welcoming environment for everybody. So we had our summer reading program this year. We expanded the way we operated so that we could include our homeless population. People, you know, everybody could be part of the services that the library offers. And lots of other libraries across the country are doing things like bringing in a social worker, things that we can't even contemplate because that's staffing we don't have. We participate in county conversations and county organizations that are supporting, making it better. But we, in terms of what we can offer, we just do our best to make it welcoming for everybody and, you know, it's, it's a, it's a difficult line for us to walk.
It seems to me that we've had a resolution passed around. Have you had an opportunity to look at that at all? Mr. Starker?
Yeah, as I, as I read the ballot language, sort of the last paragraph would seem to indicate that these are sort of set-aside revenues. You know, and shall all revenues received with a county from such mil levy be collected and spent for library purposes only? Is that, does that carry teeth when you, when you get to the county commissioners? Or is this, is this language that is somewhat misleading?
Well, it's that if the county collects a mil, they, the library has to get that money. They can't collect 3.5 or 4.5 and give some of that money to someone else. So what they can do is adjust that mil based on the Tabor cap right now or based on other considerations. So what this does is say, if they collect it for the library, it needs to come to the library and they're, without limitation is the Tabor language.
Okay. But, so the county commissioners have the, have the ability to set the mil levy that's collected for the library system at, at a number less than 3.5 or 4.5 mils when, should this pass?
Yes, even, yes. That's the legal opinion and.
And would it be also sort of fair to, to think that if, if this didn't pass, that our, our chances of getting a library downtown are diminished?
Yes, she says.
So we may or may not get it if it passes, but if it doesn't pass, we're not going to get it. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I don't want to say the word guarantee, but.
Well, there are no guarantees, but thank you for your presentation.
So what I'm hearing, I would support this resolution very much so because without it, there's no opportunity available for this city or any other city in Jefferson County or any other library. And I would be embarrassed to be the city that did not pass the resolution that was supporting this.
My, my point would be is I think, instead of just rushing to say tonight, we're going to move this forward, I think we should be able to think about it. Kind of like the Jefferson County Board of, the school board is supposed to hear something one night and talk about it maybe another night or bring it forward. I would rather not make any decisions tonight on backing this. I'd like to do some more research and hear about it from different, different avenues. Then maybe bring it in later. I mean, this is only August, so it could, it could be done in September or even October. For me personally, I can't support anything, moving anything forward tonight until I have more information about what could happen for the, for the betterment of Wheat Ridge. And I have some other concern that the county commissioners cannot give them the full amount of money because they're still under that, under the county, so.
Some other considerations? So, Ms. Fitzgerald?
I'd just like to say, I, I'm a huge supporter of libraries and I want to see you get more money. But your tax is higher than our mil levy now. So, you know, that's, well, we're in a situation where it's absolutely not sure that you'll get all the money and there's no guarantee that we'll get anything from this. And I asked the question, what does Wheat Ridge get out of this? And I'm not sure the answer is very clear. I, you know, we already have to drive to either Avada or Lakewood. So I guess in the end, I would support the resolution, but I'm not enthusiastic because I don't see us getting anything from this.
Oh. Okay. Are there, are there comments or? Are we hearing, am I hearing that we want to put this on the table and consider it further? And?
Yes, for me.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I think that, do I, and Ms. Longworthy?
I guess I'd like to at least suggest a timeframe to bringing back. I mean, to, to say that we're going to think about it and without a timeframe to coming back, it just means that we're sta, we're tabling it with no intention of, of action. I mean, if that's the intent, then I'm, I'm, I understand that, but to say that we're tabling it for a period, then give me a date. When, do we want to bring it back to a study session? Do we want to bring it back to the dais? But to table it indefinitely doesn't feel like a good course of action either. It just means that we're avoiding the, the decision by putting it aside.
How about table it for another 30 days? Bring it back in 30 days to a study session?
If we're going to wait 30 days, I'd like to bring it back to a dais.
But we may not want to have people that don't want it on the dais.
But shouldn't discussions be on the dais? If this is a resolution we're going to discuss, we've already had our information presented. I mean, it could be turned down on the dais just as easily as it can be turned, be voted up for, but we have, we have the ballot, we have the resolution, we have their white paper, we have their presentation. 30 days gives us time to do research and we either vote yes or no on it in 30 days. I mean, it, we're not.
Well, it looks worse for the board if you vote no on the dais than you just don't bring it back. I mean, if you're going to vote no, it would be better to, to table it here than not go on the dais and then vote no. And then the, the voters and everybody else are going to see that the city council is not even enthused about it. So at least if, if the study session, if it wasn't moved forward, there'd be reasons. I don't care, it's up to you guys. Doesn't make any difference to me. I'm not going to vote for it.
So what the question is, is first of all, we've got somewhat of an agreement to bring it back in 30 days. The question is whether to bring it back on the dais, which other, if we bring it back on the dais and we're ready to go yes or no versus another 30 days, we're going to talk about it and then we're, put it to a vote or bring it to the dais if we get that far. So I need some more feedback on whether you want to get it to the dais or not.
It's the same microphone, it's the same room. I don't see much difference between a study session or a dais. I mean, it's a.
I think that the idea is that if you bring it to a study session, then we've got to bring it, then to the dais as well. So this would give us an opportunity and further campaign to make a statement sooner than later is, is the only.
I'll propose a consensus to bring it back to the dais on the 4th Monday of September.
September 14th.
The last, whatever the.
The 4th. Oh, the, oh, the 28th, oh, 28th, sorry. Yep.
28th of September? Do I have any agreement on that or not?
Fine.
That's good. I have it. I have one, two, three. Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we're going to bring it back, the resolution back.
We couldn't do it on the 14th?
We're still.
Oh. Oh. I would have said we could bring it back the 14th. That's, you know, that's the, the next sort of regular, regular meeting, not hitting next week and we're off through the 31st. And that gives them a little bit of time to, you know, to understand that. Would the 14th give us enough time to look, look at it?
All right. So, you're looking at the 14th, Ms. Wooden, you first suggested the 30th? 28th, excuse me?
Yeah, but we're on the 17th. Thirty days is not that, I mean, the 14th is only three days off, whereas the 28th is a month, really a month and two weeks. So, almost two weeks. I'm, I'm good with the 14th too. I just, I, I'd like to see it on the dais. And I think that gives us an opportunity, another opportunity to put it up there and, and discuss it and, and the pros and cons of it and have a thoughtful discussion about whether or not this is a resolution we want to pass.
Okay. Now, I've, I've got, I'm looking for, this was, we had a consensus on the 28th, now 29, whatever it is, 28th. We're going back to the 14th. Can I get a consensus on that?
Can you just modify your...
That we bring this back on the 14th of September for passing the resolution?
Okay.
Or discussion?
Discussion and, and whatever on the resolution. Have I got enough on that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, we're good.
Is that unanimous? Were, are both of those consensus votes unanimous?
Yes. Mr. Do, you held...
Well, the first, the first one was not unanimous. The second one for the 14th appears to be unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Would you leave me a set of that material? Because I passed, I didn't get a set.
And if there's any value in having us here to answer questions or provide additional information, we'd be happy to come back on the 14th. Do you see?
We pro, we may need that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a question. Mr. Goff, are you in contact with the, the library on a regular basis, the people there?
Not a regular basis, but you know, we, we, we just, we talk when we need to.
I'm not sure they can offer it, but it would be good if you could talk to them and, and get a little more concrete idea of some benefit to us.
Yeah. Well, maybe to, just to summarize, what I heard tonight is the benefit to the Wheat Ridge Library would be, the hours would be extended back to normal hours. The technology would be upgraded to include some of the things they discussed and, and then refurbishment of the building. And then potential discussion, this provides potential discussion and opportunities for discussions about a future new library. This is what I heard. Is that correct? Anything else that I, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I can't find my, here we go. This is now the present item number three, the citizen survey result. Oh, here we are, right here.
Introduce.
Your name, please.
Heather's going to do.
Oh, Heather's going to introduce you.
Good evening. We're here tonight to report out on the 2015 citizen survey. Erin Caldwell is with us from the National Research Center. NRC is based out of Boulder and they are experts in survey administration. So, she's going to walk you through the survey. For citizens at home, we do have the survey results, the full report posted on our city website under the citizen survey tab. And that's in a PDF file format. And I have a copy of the presentation for you this evening. So, Erin's going to walk you through the presentation and then we'll take questions and...
Okay. And I am happy to be here to present the results of the citizen survey. And I'm actually here on behalf of my colleague Lori Urban, who was the project manager for the survey and actually did most of the work. I just get to be here to present the results. And we wanted to start by thanking Heather. She was Lori's primary contact throughout the survey development process and she was a delight to work with and provided thoughtful feedback. So, on your behalf, NRC conducted a scientific survey of the residents of Wheat Ridge. And this means that we followed survey research best practices to conduct this survey. Survey research is always a compromise to available resources. If we could, we'd like to survey every adult who lives in Wheat Ridge and present those results to you. But that's not practical or feasible, so we select a sample of households to receive the survey and do our best to solicit participation. In selecting the households to receive the survey, we used mailing lists based on the United States Postal Service Delivery Sequence File so that, pardon me, nearly every household in Wheat Ridge is eligible to receive the survey. We geocode the list so that we get just those who are within the city boundaries. So, this means that we used a list with high coverage. Almost every adult was eligible to receive the survey. We then randomly selected survey recipients from that list. So, according to probability theory, random selection means that in almost every case, the selected households are similar to all households in the list. To try to encourage response, we have multiple contacts with each household. First, we send a pre-notification postcard, which we like because you don't even have to open it to receive the notice that your household has been selected for the survey. And we find that helps to increase the open rate when they do get the envelope with the survey. So, about a week after that, we send the survey packet. It includes a cover letter signed by the mayor. And we do that to sort of appeal to people's sort of civic sense of duty and encourage response to the survey. And then we actually send a week later, a second mailing packet with, that includes a copy of the survey. And this is important because we find we get about 30% of our total responses from that second wave. And those later responders are more like our non-responders than they are like the early responders. So, it helps to increase the representativeness of the survey. When we do put IDs on surveys, which we didn't do for Wheat Ridge, we actually find you don't get very much double voting. It's like less than a half a percent of where you actually get two surveys from the same household. So, we don't get double voting and it really does increase the responses. The mailing materials include the logo of the city of Wheat Ridge to indicate the contents are important and legitimate. And as I mentioned, the cover letter signed by the mayor. And then as a final step, we compare the demographic profile of our respondents to the demographic profile of the city. And then we do some statistical adjustments or weighting. This is another survey research best practice. And the idea is, for example, we know younger people are much less likely to respond to a survey than older people, but that the younger people who did respond are more like the younger people who did not respond. So, we kind of give them some more weight and maybe deflate the responses from the older people. So, specifically for Wheat Ridge, we selected 3,000 households for the survey. Eight hundred and ninety-three completed the survey, resulting in a 31% response rate. With nearly 900 completed surveys, the 95% confidence interval, or the margin of error, a term you're probably familiar with from election polling, is about plus or minus 4%. And this is just a measure of the precision of the results of the, since we didn't survey every resident in the city, had we been able to, we're 95% confident that it would have been within that plus or minus 4% of the results we see. We have a database of survey results from resident surveys of this type conducted across the nation. And we can compare Wheat Ridge's results to those from across the nation. We also can make comparisons to just other front range jurisdictions. And this database is not just surveys that we've conducted, but we try to collect all that we can, even conducted by other entities. I'll be providing some of the highlights of the survey findings organized as key learnings. I am not going to talk about every single result that we found in the survey. The report we provided you does give you a great deal of information and detailed responses, including results for every question and in many cases, breakdowns of results by respondent subgroups such as gender, age, or area of residence within the city. And we hope that you and also city staff will dive deeper into data relevant to their missions and start discussions about the findings and even create action plans. These results could be used to measure government performance and monitor trends in resident opinion about the Wheat Ridge community. And the information can be used to inform budget, land use, and strategic planning decisions. So, one of the notable highlights from the survey results is that residents rate the quality of life in Wheat Ridge quite highly. Nearly eight in 10 respondents rated the quality of life in Wheat Ridge as excellent or good. And this was similar to what we saw in 2012. We also asked whether they thought the quality of life in Wheat Ridge was likely to improve, stay the same, or decline over the next five years. Those completing the survey were quite optimistic, with six in 10 believing it would improve. And this is actually a greater proportion than we've seen in previous years. And it seems to be not just because we're coming out of the recession, but it's in, even an improvement from 2004. When asked why they chose to live in Wheat Ridge, residents most often cited the location, their neighborhood, and safety as the reasons they chose to live here. Affordable housing and rental rates and the affordable cost of living were also popular reasons for living in Wheat Ridge. At least eight in 10 respondents reported they were very or somewhat likely to recommend living in Wheat Ridge to someone who asked and also that they would remain in the city for the next five years. Wheat Ridge residents were more likely to recommend living in their city than were the average rating of residents in other communities across the front range. We asked residents to rate a series of the community characteristics of Wheat Ridge. And those that received the most favorable ratings were related to the built and natural environment, including the availability of paths and walking trails, the availability of bike trails, the quality of the overall natural environment, air quality, and recreational opportunities, with at least two-thirds giving an excellent or good evaluation to each of these. There were a total of 22 quality of life and community characteristics that could be compared to a national benchmark. And among these, seven of Wheat Ridge's received similar ratings. Fifteen were given lower ratings by Wheat Ridge residents and one received a higher rating. And residents of front range tend to give higher ratings than those we see nationally. And so, Wheat Ridge comparisons to front range benchmarks were similar, but a little lower. We had seven that received similar ratings and 16 that were lower than the benchmark. A second key learning from the survey is that while residents appreciate the efforts that have been made for pedestrian improvements and they support future changes, many still have concerns about transportation and travel in the city. Compared to the survey results from 2012, several transportation items related to travel by private vehicle received lower ratings. And these included the ones you see here, ease of car travel, city street conditions, street repair maintenance, and traffic flow. However, ease of walking and ease of bicycle travel received higher ratings than in 2015 than in 2012, with more than half of respondents rating these aspects as excellent or good. When asked to what extent they support or oppose the city funding bicycle and pedestrian improvements, a significant majority, about seven in 10, supported such improvements. Respondents were most supportive of projects to facilitate pedestrians, such as walking trails and sidewalk connections. But bicycle projects also received strong support. We did find that residents feel less positive about city government performance and city employee customer satisfaction or customer service in 2015 than in previous survey years. The overall performance of the Wheat Ridge city government was rated as excellent or good by 51% of respondents, a decline from over 60% in previous years. Those completing the survey were also asked to evaluate six aspects of the city government's performance. About six in 10 rated the quality of work performed by city employees as excellent or good. About five in 10 thought that the overall direction the city of Wheat Ridge is taking and the value of services provided for the taxes paid to Wheat Ridge was excellent or good. And only four in 10 believed that the extent to which elected officials act in the best interest of the community at large was excellent or good. And only about three in 10 felt that Wheat Ridge does an excellent or good job informing residents about major issues within the community. The first three items shown on this slide decreased by about five percentage points in 2015 compared to 2012, so just barely reaching that statistical significance. The fourth item declined by about seven percentage points. And then those last two actually declined by over 10 percentage points. So, I'm sure this is somewhat disappointing news. We know that there have been some controversial, controversial issues in Wheat Ridge that have received a lot of attention. And sometimes those kinds of things can kind of create some stir in the community and, you know, kind of give an overall pallor, you know, a downgrade to ratings. So, it'll be interesting to see the next time you do the survey if that turns around and the ratings come back. Residents rated the quality of work of city employees positively, as I mentioned earlier. And of the 42% of respondents who had contact with a city employee, between 60 and 75% gave excellent or good reviews of their interactions, including the employees' courteousness, responsiveness, and their overall impression. However, these ratings do represent a decrease from 2012 and were lower than the national and front range benchmarks. Another key finding is that residents appreciate the services provided in the city, but see room for improvement. The overall quality of city services was rated positively by a majority of residents, with 7% giving an excellent rating and 65% giving a good rating. This was similar to the ratings given in 2012 and was similar to the national and front range benchmark comparisons. A list of 23 individual services was provided to respondents who were asked to evaluate the quality and importance of each. Overall, at least half of respondents gave excellent or good ratings to 16 of the 23 services, with the highest evaluations going to services related to parks and recreation and police services. Twenty-one of the city service items rated could be compared to national benchmarks. And a majority received ratings similar to these benchmarks, with one receiving a higher rating, and that was recreational facilities, and six receiving lower ratings. Of the 20 items that could be compared to the front range benchmarks, the majority of Wheat Ridge's ratings again were similar. However, snow removal was rated higher than the front range average. Those completing the survey were also asked to rate how important they felt each city service was. As might be expected, police services were in the top essential services. But other services on which residents placed a high priority included street services and outdoor recreation amenities. Street repair and maintenance and snow removal were considered essential or very important by nine in 10 respondents, while the maintenance of existing city parks and of open space and trails were considered essential or very important by over eight in 10 respondents. Another key finding from the survey is that although survey respondents are unsure about which area of the city of Wheat Ridge should be considered the city's center, they are clear in their opposition to 38th Avenue projects. When asked whether they thought that 38th Avenue between Uppam and Marshall is the city's center, about half of respondents agreed, while 20% neither agreed nor disagreed, and 31% actually disagreed. When asked how important various features were for the 38th Avenue between Uppam and Marshall, about three-quarters of respondents considered each of the items as at least somewhat important. But shown on this slide are the percent who rated each as essential or very important. The two items considered essential or very important by over half of respondents included retail commercial development and encouraging or incentivizing private sector investment. About half felt it was essential or very important to maintain four to five vehicle lanes in the corridor, while only about a third felt it was essential or very important to create a pedestrian-friendly two to three lane roadway. However, about half did want to see the installation of pedestrian amenities and better sidewalks in the corridor. Additional housing options were considered essential or very important by only about three in 10 respondents, while about four in 10 felt it was essential or very important to include on-street parking. So, as you know, in 2014, Wheat Ridge voters defeated Measure 2B, which would have narrowed the official street width designation for a portion of 38th Avenue, allowing Wheat Ridge to reduce the number of vehicle lanes in order to expand sidewalks and other landscaping and pedestrian amenities. This was explained to the survey participants who were asked to what extent they supported or opposed each of the following aspects of the 38th Avenue project. As can be seen, nearly all aspects of the project were opposed by 50% or more of respondents, and none was supported by more than a third of respondents. We did ask respondents if they had voted for or against the measure. Nineteen percent said they had voted for it, 43% said they voted against it, 22% said they didn't vote, and 15% weren't sure. Responses, self-reported voting behavior on Measure 2B was compared by the level of support for each of these aspects of the 38th Avenue project. And as might be expected, those who voted in favor of 2B were generally supportive, actually of all of these aspects. But those who had voted against it were strongly opposed to most of these aspects. We included some additional policy topics on the questionnaire. In addition to the 38th Avenue corridor, those completing the survey were asked how important it was to improve the attractiveness of city corridors in Wheat Ridge. And about half felt it was essential or very important to do so. And six in 10 supported dedicating resources to code enforcement for this effort, with only two in 10 opposing that idea. Measure 2A was also defeated by Wheat Ridge voters in 2014. This measure would have increased Wheat Ridge's sales tax from 3% to 4% to support roads and other infrastructure, as well as parks and recreation improvements. Respondents were asked, thinking about your own view of that sales tax measure, please indicate the extent to which you agree or disagree with each of the following potential reasons for not supporting the measure. The biggest reason for not supporting it was feeling like they had insufficient information about what specific projects would be funded. Six in 10 respondents were also concerned that the funds would be used on 38th Avenue. However, many did, and this is sort of a double negative, did disagree that the city does not need to make additional investments in its infrastructure and facilities, so indicating they do think that this additional investment is needed. When asked... When asked whether they had voted for or against Measure 2A, 23% said they voted in favor, 37 against, 21% didn't vote, and 19% didn't know how or whether they had voted. And even among those who had voted for the measure, a majority agreed that there was insufficient information about what specific projects would be funded by the tax increase. Next, respondents were asked to think about a possible future tax increase and indicate how important, if at all, each of the following characteristics of a tax increase measure would be. And as might be expected, given what we just learned on the previous slide, having a specific list of capital projects with cost estimates and project timeframes was critical to such a measure, with nearly nine in 10 feeling this was essential or very important. About six in 10 felt that the sales tax increase should be limited to an amount less than 1%, and over half thought it was essential or very important that no bonded debt be used to pay for the projects. Only about three in 10 thought a tax or fee option other than a sales tax should be used. That is the end of my summary, and I would welcome any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. You went through that pretty quick.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't mind talking too fast.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
I note that there was a big difference between the way people under 55 responded and the way people older than 55 responded.
Yeah, that's fairly typical. And it is one of those reasons we weight the data, so that we make sure we're really representing the entire community in our results.
Tell me how you weighted that.
There's a little more detail, and let me find the page, in the survey methodology appendix, where we kind of show what the characteristics were of those who did respond to the survey compared to the census. So how that works is 39% of Wheat Ridge is age 50... Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. That's, I'm on page 110 of the report. So 39% of residents are 55 and over according to the 2010 census, but we had almost doubled that. We had 67% who responded to the... Of those who responded to the survey were over 55, so we kind of decreased that so that they were closer to 40% of the respondents with that statistical adjustment. I don't know if that helps, but that's how we do it. So it's kind of like each one of those caught like half of the weight, and the younger respondents got more weight.
So I'm clear, the younger groups that were responding to this, based on that weighted average, then their opinions in this survey were represented to a greater extent than the...
Than their actual...
The older population because of that?
Because of that adjustment. And that's just one of those survey research best practices. Everybody has to make those kinds of adjustments to their results.
It evens it out.
It evens it out.
So it could have been even worse. The numbers would have been worse if you just didn't weight it?
Worse in which?
More negative.
I haven't looked closely enough at all of the breakdowns by age to tell you that, but I could look and, you know...
No, that's fine. I just think it reflects what I've heard and seen the last couple of years from the general public.
Any other questions?
Just kind of thinking, not necessarily directed to you, I appreciate everything you've provided to us, I think that's great. I'm just sort of thinking about this and looking back at the sales tax increase, that this was something that we had discussed prior to that ballot issue going forward, relative to just providing specific items to the voters as to what we wanted to spend the sales tax increase on, but it was the thought of the rest of council to add that extra piece to it, which says, "Any other sort of economic development effort we want to put it towards, we'll put it towards." So I would still be in favor of putting forward some kind of sales tax increase in the future, but we need to be very mindful of these results and that the citizens are willing to, and they say that they are willing to, provide us with additional revenue, but they need to know exactly where we're going to be spending it. So I think that needs to be heard loud and clear, because we need additional revenue to do the services that we need to do, and if we can provide them with a list of things we can do and provide them with a less than 1% sales tax increase, the citizens are telling us they're willing to work with us on that, so there needs to be some kind of compromise. I mean, does that ring true for the rest of you?
I just want to make...
Ms. Wood.
Okay, can I make a comment on that? So I would support, you know, another sales tax increase, and it's saying a specific, in their question, they said a specific list of capital projects and cost estimates and a timeframe, and I'm just curious if, I'm just hypothetically saying a 1% sales tax, if a list were to come forward and say in the next 10 years, a list, then does it sunset and then the city council in the future goes back to the voters and asks for another list? And that, is this what you're proposing? I'm just wondering.
The citizens from this survey indicate that they want the specific list of the projects and a timetable for those, so that would indicate some kind of sunset for that, so that it isn't, if it's in perpetuity, that means that it could be used for whatever. The citizen's saying, "We want specific projects at specific costs under a specific timeframe."
And is this separate from the general fund? In other words, is this, I mean, in other words, I know Arvada does a specific infrastructure tax, and that is separate from the general fund, and then that goes specifically and is invested over time to grow, and that's how our neighboring cities have been able to do the fantastic projects they've done, and Wheat Ridge has never had anything like that. So if that wording is important in that if we're going to ask the citizens for a tax increase, that it's, I guess, put into a box of infrastructure investments going forward, because we are lagging drastically behind our neighbors in all types of infrastructure, and meaning, including, you know, improvements to Anderson Pool streets, you know, that kind of thing.
I think what's being said in this report is it's not streets and pools, it's Anderson Pool, it's a specific street in a specific area, and what that's going to cost, and then allowing that to go forward on those very specific items, and it isn't in perpetuity either.
Well, I'd be curious how other cities, especially maybe Arvada, handled their tax increase, where they tagged it, and I don't know the exact term, but how they did specifically address projects for improvement in infrastructure for the city. I'd be curious how that is structured from other cities and, you know, if that's something that we should consider bringing to the voters as it's half a percent and it's in perpetuity, however, there's guidelines and it has to be set. I'd be curious in that information.
I have a few more things, but you can go.
Well, I know some others want to speak on it. Mr. Jatulio, you had your hand up.
Just real quickly, Genevieve, I think the city of Wheat Ridge has done some of those in the past, where we went to the voters and said it was $12 million for the rec center, and it's going to be X amount of sales tax over X amount of time, and then that sunsetted. So we've done that, and it worked. When we added a wing to the city hall, it was a $5 million, I think, tax, and those were all sunsetted. So I think you're on the right track, but we have to have more, I don't know, based on the data that I've seen and what I've seen in the past, the voters don't want a blank check. So I think if you list the streets or the projects and their costs and a timeframe, and sometimes what Arvada's done and Wheat Ridge has done in the past is, let's say it's a half a cent sales tax over 15 years, and then it reduces down in it to a maintenance fee, maintenance tax, maybe from five, one half a percent down to a quarter percent. And so you have some different opportunities with that. So it starts off at a higher amount, you complete these projects, you give them a timeframe, you give them an amount and more detail, and then either, because you're going to have maintenance costs in the future, then you tweak it down in perpetuity from a half a cent to a quarter cent. And that's kind of how you can approach it, too. And then public safety has always been a, almost I like to say, but a no-brainer. When you go to the voters and say, like, "Oh, our 2004 sales tax, we said we're going to hire 10 new cops, and we're going to spend X amount of money in parks maintenance," and that was more of a generic term, which did pass for economic development. So, but we did say 10 police officers, and so there was, there's your specificity that people like, I think, but it didn't sunset.
I think that structure of how it could be set up moving forward and invested, because the big thing is that I know in some other cities, when they invested that money, their funds grew to huge amounts, so they literally paid cash for some of these big projects that they've done. So I think it's important for the city to look at that going forward.
Ms. Davis.
I agree to list the streets or the streets and the improvement projects and that type of thing, but I guess I can also understand how we kind of had the little sentence at the end that, you know, might have done us in, might not have done us in, but, you know, just speaking to some folks recently who's had their home flooded because of our lack of drainage, and so they're not on the list because we didn't put it on a vote, so they continue to have a flooded basement and, on these big rains, have it all just flow right into their yard and in their basement. And so, I mean, I appreciate the idea of listing the projects, especially when they're big projects, but I do think that there might come a time that there's some negative effect that happened over here that's now creating big problems in this neighborhood that we would need to take care of, that would, you know, we'd need money to do so. Not, you know, hey, maybe we can get it out of the general fund, but I would also like to be able to have a little bit of that flexibility for those instances where we have neighbors with flooded basements because of our drainage system. So I understand the one point, I understand spelling it out, I'm fine, everything, all the above, but I do know that there's things that come up, that it's not the hook ramps on Youngsfield that we can plan for, it's the other, you know, those, fine, we can plan for that, it's some of the other things that you don't plan for that impact our citizens. And it's, you know, not in the five, 10-year plan that we can foresee some of it.
So what I'm hearing is a general interest in bringing this sales tax in back, but with caution as to the best way to present it, as well as the realization that we get income either from increasing the sales tax period or increasing our economic development that creates more sales tax. So both of those have to be considered, and is there anything more on the, the survey?
Zach's still at this one.
Yeah.
I guess a question for Patrick. You obviously received this report in July.
We received, I don't know when exactly the city got a draft, but we just, Aaron came in last, the week before last, and presented it to staff last week, and presented it to staff, that's the first time I saw the results, but...
Just looking at the results for 38th, I think, would significantly impact the vote that we just took to put $100,000 into additional efforts for design and outreach, whereas I think we need to be looking at more, as the citizens have stated here, developing retail commercial opportunities, encouraging incentivizing private sector investments, maintaining four to five vehicle lanes, and to a lesser extent, holding community events and installing better sidewalks. So how do those, those elements impact or otherwise alter that contract that we have with that, I forget the name of the organization?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the contract we have is, which was approved by city council, I think, 8-0, my understanding, was to start another public process and provide many alternatives for a new design on 38th Avenue that there would be consensus for the committee. So we'll provide these results to the consultant, and maybe they can use those as questions, additional questions to get further detailed information from, from the constituents who participate in the process.
And then my next question is, as the city manager, what is your next step based on these results, knowing that in these benchmark categories, near 55% of the categories, we are ranking lower and much lower? How does that square with being city manager of the year? I don't, I'm just sort of floored by these results.
Well, I think if you look back at the surveys back to 2008, you know, and I, you know, I don't know if I'm going to even respond to that question the way it was put, Mr. Urban. I think that was a little facetious and mean.
No, it's not mean.
If you want to address the question in a professional manner, I'll answer it.
My question is, how can we improve as a city?
Well, that's, that's my job and city council's job, and it's your job to give me direction as a council and a board to help improve the city. If you look at the survey results since 2008, they haven't changed much in those factors.
We have, it was 4%.
Against the benchmark cities. Well, that's a specific question, but not against the benchmark cities. We have fallen behind and are lower than a lot of the benchmark cities, or higher than some of them. We have a lot of work to do. I think we've improved a lot. It doesn't all fall on my shoulders.
I'm not saying that it does.
That's kind of what you said.
I'm saying, as a city manager, and knowing that there's specific questions in here relating to city staff performance and courtesy of the staff and situations like that, that those are issues that you have control over that we don't have control over.
There's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of information that we need to dig into further and see what we can do, and we'll bring a plan forward to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
I would like to just bring to my colleagues' attention page 21. It's a scatter chart. I think this is the most valuable thing in this entire document. This correlates what citizens consider important with what they also consider that we're not doing well. And so I'm thinking, since we're in the process of planning the 2016 budget, and in relation to any potential future election, we really ought to pay attention to those things that are in the upper left-hand corner, or maybe below the mean in the left-hand corner here. Those are things that are considered important by citizens, but they also are saying we're not doing that well. So I just think everybody should look at that.
Page 21. It's 25 on the packet.
In the packet.
25.
25?
When I look at this, page 21, it certainly indicates a lot of the things that are important and are in the upper levels, so...
The drainage is not in there, but streets are in there, and streets are mentioned in many other places in the, in the document, so...
I particularly noticed the public art is in a very low place. A little plug for public art here, please. Mr. Jatulio.
I just had a quick question for council. We know a cost of, fairly close of, in this scatter chart, street maintenance is high, and we've talked about Kipling, or 38th Avenue, Kipling West, and we probably can get some updated numbers. Does this council think it's too late to go to the voters this year for a ballot question to refund that, fund that street? Are we too, too late on that? If you had a specific project cost? I mean, we know one penny was $6 million a year, we know a half a penny is probably going to be $3 million a year, and we know that that, at one time, was about $12 million for the drainage and the sidewalks and all the safety features. Is it too late to go to the voters this year for a...
I think it's too late to hit the coordinated election, isn't it?
Well, that's not September 4th, is when those, that paperwork is due to the county, I believe.
August 24th would be the last meeting to approve any language.
August 24th?
August 24th. It's not due to the county until September, but August 24th is the last meeting.
Never mind.
Okay.
I had another question over here.
I'm sorry. I would support, though, the further discussion of utility, storm utility.
For a vote?
The, but I, a discussion for city, for council.
We do have that penciled in on September 24th.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Which goes without a vote.
I understand that part, but...
Well, isn't that one of the things that the survey said, is they didn't support fees or taxes that weren't voted on, or...
I have a couple other questions. On the changes in transportation, excuse me, changes in transportation ratings over time, there was decline in ease of car travel, and do you have, what does that mean exactly? Just that statement, ease of car travel?
That's a good question. I think it sometimes means different things to different people, but, you know, how easy is it to get around by car? So that could be the condition of the roads, it could be traffic congestion.
Okay, okay.
Traffic signal timing. Traffic signal timing.
Sorry. On the slide where they talked about potential reasons for not supporting Measure 2A, I was confused on some of these, and I know when you do these surveys, they can be construed to mean a lot of different things. But when I read that the statement, "Sales tax is not a fair and equitable source of municipal general fund revenue." It really concerns me, that's the, that is our fund source. Sales tax is what makes the city run, and that's the bottom line. So if we say, you know, we have an exceptionally small property tax, I mean, what is it, $36? $36 per household, okay? So we don't have a, like somebody just said, we have a smaller mill levy than the library. We need to start talking about, if our citizens are saying, no, sales tax isn't a good rep... Well, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna deliver services? How are we gonna do these things if that's what the public feels? And if, you know, if that's an education issue, then fine, but...
Just, just a comment, we could double or triple our mill levy and still not be anywhere close to where we need to be.
What kind of income does that bring in, though?
It's $700,000 a year revenue.
$700,000?
For our current mill is 1.8 mills, it's about $700 or $1,000 a year. So every time you double it, you're gonna go $700,000, 1.4.
However, our property values have gone up too. I thought I had somebody, okay.
I'm sorry, I have another one.
Go ahead.
And then on that same slide, it says insufficient information about what specific projects would be funded, which goes back to Mr. Urban's comment about they wanna list, you know. I just feel like we're in, in a difficult position in that we want to run the city effectively, we want to be an effective city government, we want to please our citizens. We are citizens, we are, we don't become somebody different when you're elected to city council, you're still a citizen. And that there's a "they" and then the "citizens" is, is really disappointing, and it's really unfortunate. And how are we going to, as a city, collectively, as a city, look at what we want to accomplish, how we're gonna get there, and how it's gonna be funded? And it's really important that, that that discussion come about, because it's not Patrick deciding this, that, and the other thing. It's city council working with Patrick to make those decisions to make this happen. And, and that we have a certain amount of citizens, which is a shocking number to me, that doesn't believe sales tax is part of that, means that, I, I don't know that everyone is aware of our budget and how it works. And that, these are things that really need to be discussed publicly, discussed publicly, so that we can work with our citizens, 'cause we all want a city that we can enjoy, work with, and be prosperous.
You're advocating more information as to how we get, how we get buildup funds within our budget.
Well, I, I think the concern is, is our demographic states that our income for a family of four is $48,000 a year. So I think when you go to the voters and you say, we need money for this and we need money for that, and the average income is $48,000 a year for a family of four, they're gonna say to you, well, I have, I have expenses and I have a family to raise and I have things to take care of, and this is what happened, I believe, last year. We're dealing with a demographic that's $48,000 a year for a family of four, and that's not a lot of money when you start paying for, paying your bills. And so until that changes, that's why the NRS called for changing the demographics, changing those stakeholders, so you had more disposable income within the city.
Which is why sales tax is so important to us, which is why sales, you know, sales tax that's consistent, that we can depend on, and that we need, we need stores, retail, restaurants that are gonna help generate that sales tax. And considering that over 50% of our sales tax is generated by people that do not live in Wheat Ridge, that is vital to our city.
All right. Is there a reason we want to, at some point, have this discussion? Sounds like we're gonna have a discussion as far as stormwater, that's a utility, but sales tax?
Well, we're gonna have a discussion about our drainage, drainage infrastructure needs, and it's up to council to decide where they want to take that. That's, that's on the agenda.
Any other questions of Aaron here?
I'd just like to make a comment, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but on, I don't know where it is in the packet, but on, on page 29 that I have, when citizens are asked about all the individual features of 38th, they are in favor. So people want four lanes, but they also want sidewalks, amenity areas, planters, all the things we were trying to do. So it seems like they're, you know, in the one place, what they're, when they're asked about 38th Avenue, they're adamantly, strongly against it. When they're asked about the individual attributes, they're strongly for it. So that's a little difficult situation to, to get through.
Yeah.
I think one way to square that is to look at, as it's described, citizens want better sidewalks, not necessarily wider sidewalks. Citizens want landscaping, not necessarily an entire street of landscaping. So it's, it's, we want a beautification of Wheat Ridge, we want a, a place where good retail outlets or vendors or companies want to locate, but not necessarily to sacrifice lane width or number of lanes in our major thoroughfare. So I think that's what they're, they're considering there when you, when you're looking at that. Yes, we want 38th Avenue to be a good place to do business at, but not at the expense of, through traffic.
Ms. Fitzgerald, are you done?
Well, I, I don't know, I don't want to get into a discussion with that, but it's just physically impossible to put into that space all of these amenities while also having four lanes. So somehow we gotta square that. The only other way to do that would be to get prop, get property, get right along the side, would be the only other way, so...
Mr. Giattolio?
Tim, I think what I hear is that folks like Harlan West, and, 'cause there was right-of-way acquisition there, sidewalks, added landscaping, amenities. So I think Harlan West, Harlan East, they like Harlan East, the way it was done with, and I think what they're looking for is a Harlan West, where it's gonna be some right-of-way acquisition with business owners and property owners, and it'll be a give-and-take, but I think you could do it with four lanes or whatever ends up with these designs.
I think that the study that we're doing is going to give a lot more opportunity for public input as to what really is desirable and maybe take some of the sting out of it so that we, we can get some nice decisions made, what, what our, what our public wants. Any other questions on the survey or comments? Sure.
Just like to say, like to apologize to Patrick for my frustration. I'm just sort of taken aback by the results that are coming out of this, and it was inappropriate for me to lash out in that way, but just know that, that these are some very specific, very harsh realities that we, as a community, have to face. And being in the minority on council, it, it feels a little powerless and to be able to change some of these things, and so that's where I'm coming from, but I, I don't want that to be as though I'm being negative, but I, we have some negative comments here that we specifically need to address, and we need to address immediately, or else we'll never be able to get any type of trust built back up with the residents. So that's where I'm coming from, and I apologize if that was a little too far.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, we were shocked with the results, too. And there, there's a lot of, I think, inconsistent results that we need to figure out what, what, what they mean and how to move forward. But that's, that's, that's not just staff, that's council, and that's the public. And we need to figure out a way how this community's gonna move forward. And, you know, you, you can't, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna read into the, these results because you don't know until you, unless you sat down with all these, these 900 people and ask them, what did you mean when you said that? So we need to figure out what these results mean and then move forward.
Mr. Starker?
Well, I think in all truth, we spent the last 18 months bashing one another. So to see that, to see that attitude reflected in the public outcome of these survey questions, I think it's pretty natural. So until we can kind of sit down and, and look at the, at a productive way to have a dialogue where we move this city forward, we're going to, we're going to suffer the consequences of, of just battling it out.
And Ms. Wooden?
I think to assume that Patrick and other city staff would not do anything based on this, given to them a week ago, is really unfair. It was a week ago, and you're assuming Patrick's not concerned or that he doesn't care. And I think based on his past performance, he does care. And considering Mr. Starker's comment on actions of one city council member against another city council member, I'm embarrassed, and I agree with Mr. Starker. We need to work together and move forward. That doesn't mean we can't agree, but we have to have a dialogue where we can move forward, work with our city manager and our staff, and work with our citizens. And that doesn't mean right or wrong, nay, or nay. And I, I'm embarrassed by some of the actions that have occurred. And I'm sorry that was said to you, Patrick, and thank you for apologizing, Zach.
Okay. Well, we have a citizen meeting the end of this month? No.
August 31st?
August 31st. Great opportunity to really talk with our citizens, this is how we've made it to be, because they, once again, reminded us in here that they wanted more conversation, that they wanted to, especially on large, large decisions that are being made, that'll be an opportunity, and let's keep going forward on that.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Okay. Busy nights. Smoking ordinance is item number four. We have Mr. Dahl with us.
We do, we got Mr. Dahl and Mr. Chief.
Chief Brennan?
Time for cigarette break.
As long as it's further than 15 feet from the door, yeah.
As long as it's in a vape bin. We brought back, we, we brought this to city council back in July. City council had some suggestions and some changes to the draft ordinance that we provided then. Dahl's office made those changes for us. There was also direction at that time to make sure that we connected with our business community that may be impacted by any of these changes. We did do that, we sent out about 80 letters to different businesses that may be impacted by any changes to the outdoor smoking areas. I've only received one comment, I'm not sure if we have any businesses here this evening, they were invited this evening. I'd received one email from business, Iron Rail Tavern. They did state that they would prefer if city council stayed with some type of, allowed outdoor smoking, but with a distance requirement. So that's the only comment that I did receive. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dahl as his office drafted this, or the chief, or whoever wants to start.
Well, I was gonna give a summary, but you just did it, so I'm gonna pass the baton to Mr. Dahl.
Thanks, council. I appreciate the summary, you have the memo from me, the, and you've gone over this before, so you know that what we're doing is bringing this, our code in, in conformance with the Clean Indoor Air Act, so that it doesn't say smoking's permitted in various restaurants, et cetera. And so dragging us forward about 40 years, which is good. There are two specific things that, that are called out in, in this particular ordinance for your consideration. As you know, we added hookah bar, and that's now prohibited. We expanded the ordinance to deal with smoking marijuana and also smoking tobacco or marijuana by vaping or e-cigarettes, et cetera, wherever smoking is prohibited. So, yeah, the, the rule would be the same, whether you're lighting, lighting up a cigarette or an e-cigarette, the, the prohibition on smoking and the allowance of smoking would be the same. So the, I think that's important, so the officers don't have to try to figure out, well, if this is an e-cigarette, it's okay, if it's a regular cigarette, it's not. And I think probably the public expectation is that as well. The two choices that are available for you to make, or that have been identified, are on pages six and seven of the ordinance, I'm not quite sure which pages those are in the packet, but they're highlighted in blue. And the, the first sort of choice that really came up, coming out of your, your previous meeting, was whether to allow smoking in outdoor patio seating areas. And you'll notice the language that has been given to you is if you want to allow that, 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 smoking in outdoor seating areas, then you don't add this paragraph number three. And paragraph number three basically says, look, you know, the following outdoor areas, smoking is not permitted. And those areas include parks, playgrounds, outdoor areas in which the general public has access, transit stops, light rail and bus stops. And then the question would be, do you add the outdoor seating and patio areas provided by a business or employer for use by the public or its employees? So that's one choice that you need to make. Does that, does that language stay in?
Can I answer that, or make a comment on that? Do you wanna wait?
Sure, let me, let me give you your other choice, and then we can have a discussion. The other choice is on page seven, and it's in highlighted as well. And you'll notice here that the question is whether to allow smoking within 15 feet of, of doorways. And you'll notice, again, the language that you can choose to add or not is that, that smoking is allowed, if you want to allow it, within the outdoor area of any business except to the extent it's within 15 feet of an entryway. So those are the two questions.
So talking to a couple of business owners on 38th, like Acclances, has a huge patio, and then also you got Carl, not Carl Plus.
Right.
Well, actually, Wheat Ridge Cyclopes, I'm, ah, Wheat Ridge Lanes. I mean, they've been allowed to have, they built their patios with the idea that they would allow smoking 15 feet or more away from their front door. And that's what the current code allows, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're saying if we leave the code the way it is in these two sections, that'll still be allowed, correct?
The, the 15 feet from the door?
Yes. If we leave the code alone, we don't change anything, the 15 feet will stay, is that you're suggesting?
Well, and as, as written, yes, that, that's right. You, you can't, the, the intention would be that you don't smoke within 15 feet of the entryway.
So I would like to, for me personally, and talking to, I think it's a win-win to allow them to still have that option.
To have a patio, or smoking on the patio.
Smoking patio, like Wheat Ridge Lanes, and these bigger, these patios that were built with the idea of that was allowed. I just hate to clamp it down so tight that these folks can't, I mean, it's gonna happen, and I just don't want people to be getting called and arrested and...
And I think it's fair to, to sort of link the two questions, and you'll notice they're kind of linked even in the, in the language. If you allow smoking in outdoor seating and patio areas provided by a business or employer for use by the public or its employees, then it, it makes sense to say you can smoke to the, the, the outdoor area of a business except to the extent it's within 15 feet of an entryway. And so, you know, the two go together.
I've got a couple hands up.
Yeah.
I believe I saw Ms. Davis first.
Well, thanks. So just a quick question on that note, 'cause the first person I thought of was Wheat Ridge Lanes as well, because I know he brought it up when he first built that patio. The businesses can always choose to not have people smoke on their patios. So for instance...
That's right.
Clances. Clances could say, we apologize, we're, this is a smoke-free environment, even on our, in our patios. And I guess with that being in mind, it kind of does still give the flexibility that, you know, there are places, I like it or not, you know, I don't want to stereotype, but there are places that people might go out and smoke more, and there's others that might not. And I think that allowing a business to make that decision versus us would be prudent. And I also think that also, if I'm a person who doesn't like cigarette smoke, or I have children and I don't want them around cigarette smoke, then I will choose to go to a patio that's smoke-free versus a patio that allows people to smoke.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Just a, a couple of small questions. If, if we allow smoking in patios with the owner's permission 15 feet away from the door, is that consistent with state law? That's the first question. And the second question is, is there any inconsistency between smoking cigarettes and vaping in this, in this?
Take up the second question first. No, no inconsistency. Smoking is defined as using any means to, to do that. And if you allow, if you allow smoking in outdoor patios, that's consistent, that's permitted by state law, you're allowed to have that local rule. And councilmember... And Councilmember Davis's point is correct. If you allow smoking in outdoor areas, there's another aspect of the ordinance, it's on page seven, that says, look, even if it's allowed, a local business can decide to be more restrictive. And the example I had kind of thought of to get ready for this was limousines under private hire, or one of the except exempt, cigar, tobacco bars are too, but I suspect that's one of the few places, they're, they're not gonna exercise the local option. But if you've got a limousine service that chooses to not allow smoking in its limousine, it would be able to do that. Whereas, under the code, it's, it's one of the places that's exempt, they could be more restrictive.
Yeah, Ms. Wooden?
A couple of things. First of all, could we pass out the handouts that we had received? And I, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought we were also gonna discuss tobacco retail stores. Is that correct?
Retail tobacco stores?
Right. That they were gonna be part of the new ordinance and not exempt?
I...
And the issue was the, you know, the private rooms, the lounges? And I just wanna verify how our, how does our ordinance currently read that? Can? I mean, I'm not sure how it reads currently.
Okay.
Because it says here that they're accepted, but a lot of the information that we're getting is that this is an issue in some cities, because then when these lounges are made available for testing, that can become an issue for developing a lounge.
Fair enough. Let me see if I can address that. I appreciate you raising it. To begin with, a retail tobacco business is exempt, as you see in the, in the list on page six. However, to the extent that business is operating a hookah bar as defined, and that's defined on page, page three. It's an establishment where patrons by themselves or by sharing with others smoke tobacco, marijuana, similar products from a communal hookah or nargile, I guess, or similar device, to the extent they're operating that within that business, then that, the hookah bars are by themselves simply prohibited. So you can't, if you had a retail tobacco business, you couldn't say, okay, in the back room, you can, you can, you can, you can smoke, because that's sort of a subset of the business, but it's a prohibited subset of that business.
So does that include, regarding e-cigarettes, does that include allowing, so, I just wanna make sure I say this correctly. So if someone was to go to a tobacco retail store, and they wanted to test an e-cigarette juice, they would have to leave the establishment 15 feet to test it? Am I correct?
Yes, because they, well...
They can't test it inside the establishment.
Well, actually, I mean, if that business is exempt from the regulations, then smoking could take place in the business. The only smoking they can't take, at least is presently written, the only smoking that could not take place in the business, is if there's sort of a hookah bar, kind of formal, you know, that's a communal pipe. I, I think what you're describing is me as an individual saying, I wanna try that. Well, do you have a room here where I can do that? And to be honest, I think that, that within a retail tobacco business, unless you write in a further restriction, I think I could, that would be all right. I think that that would be permitted inside that retail tobacco business. Because there's a difference between me saying, can I test that, going into some back room to test it individually, and the prohibition here for hookah bars, which is, you know, kind of a communal, you know, bong or whatever that you're all using. And I think the fact pattern you're describing is one customer wants to test that cigar, wants to test that, and, and that's not prohibited in a retail tobacco business.
And I'm bringing it up as a suggestion that we discuss more because of the issues that have been brought forward is to what is in that vape device? And, you know, is it an e-juice, or is it something else? And I think we should consider including retail tobacco stores in the ordinance as a prohibited place. In other words, if you go into a convenience store, you're not gonna be able to test a e-cigarette. You're gonna have to go outside if you wanted to smoke it. And making it the same way for tobacco retail stores to help ensure that our community is gonna be smoke-free, tobacco-free, vape-free.
Fair question. And you, and you can treat it, you can move it to either category, but as you described, it's the kind of business just like a cigar tobacco bar, where you could otherwise smoke individually. And the hookah bar prohibition, you know, doesn't reach that. And so I think that, yeah. And, and I think that it's a fair policy question for the council, which category do you want that kind of business to be in?
For me, I wouldn't want to limit that. For me, I think if, if it's a retail store, and they're gonna sell it, and they can go in and test it, I think they should be allowed to in that business. I think that's getting...
So does that mean, like, convenience stores, gas stations?
No, I'm talking about a retail...
Yeah.
The language actually says...
I, I'm just pointing out that you can't test it in any of those other places either. And so...
It's a grocery store.
Right. And then what would prevent them from having a back room that turns into a lounge? I mean, that's what we don't know.
Let me add to the discussion. The retail tobacco business that's exempt is defined, and you'll notice the definition, we probably should call it retail, right? It's on page four. A sole tobacco business, a sole proprietorship corporation, et cetera, engaged primarily in the sale, manufacture, promotion of tobacco, tobacco or smoking products, either at wholesale or retail, and in which the sale or manufacture or promotion of other products is merely incidental. So I would, to me, that is clear. Again, you may well say that you still wanna prohibit it, but convenience stores is, is not, engage primarily in the sale of tobacco products. Their other products are probably the main. You would have to say it's engaged primarily in the sale for the prohibition to apply.
Mr. Starker?
So, Mr. Dahl, we could have, we could establish vaping lounges then, where patrons could come into, to a retail tobacco store, and as long as they weren't sharing a hookah, they could each have their individual pens and, and commune with one another as long as they weren't commuting from the same burning device. Is that, is that correct? If we exempt retail tobacco stores, or if we don't, from the ordinance?
Well, if, if you, if you said that, well, currently, I think retail tobacco businesses are exempt. So smoking inside a retail tobacco store, whether it be a regular cigarette, or whether it be vaping, or an e-cigarette...
Right.
Would be allowed, per the question councilmember wouldn't ask me. And the only way that would be prohibited would be if it were a communal pipe. So you could, it, it would seem to me that, that it would be a little unhandy, I think, probably to, to, to create sort of an affirmative back room testing smoking room permission in a retail store that's otherwise prohibited from having smoking. I, I think you either say it's, it's an exempt business or not, but you could probably, you could try to divide it up.
But if, but if you have, I mean, if we, if we exempt a retail tobacco business, then patrons going into that business would be able to, to sample the wares on-site, and those would be either, you know, pipes, or cigars, or vape pens, or the other forms, and would not be prohibited from that, as long as they weren't communally sharing it, which would then make it a hookah bar. I just wanna, I, I just wanna get clear, that's the way that the ordinance is currently drafted.
That is the way it's currently drafted, and the chief points out that, that a potential fact pattern, I suppose, is the one we had with the Three Kings, just to say it, the Three Kings DAB supply people, that, that were primarily selling marijuana, but were also allowing customers to, to, I won't say test, but to, you know, basically to smoke on, on the premises. And it turned into more of a, a location where you would go to smoke, as opposed to go to buy something and go elsewhere.
Do we understand everything? Is it running clear now, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I, I, in order to make the law consistent, I think we should allow vaping in the same places we allow smoking, for ease of use by the police, for one thing, but also because it would be totally illogical to allow smoking, which is proven to be harmful, and disallow vaping, in which there is absolutely no peer-reviewed evidence that there is anything wrong with it. And I did ask a medical professional who frequently comes to our meetings to provide some peer-reviewed studies, and she was unable to do that. So I think this is inconsistent to allow smoking but not vaping under the same circumstances.
Particularly within tobacco-selling establishment?
I think, at least for me, the concern is, is that I don't wanna see another Three Kings. I don't wanna see a place where, instead of it just being the sampling, which is fine, I mean, if they wanna sam, I mean, I will not take my daughter into a, a cigarette retail store. I won't, because I don't want her to see it, and I don't want her to be exposed to any more of it than necessary. And I'm okay with them doing the sampling there, that's their business, and, and that makes logical sense. What doesn't make sense to me is how that can run away and become more of a social club than it is really a testing of product. So, I mean, that's where I would wanna, that's where I wanna draw the line. Like, I, fine, I mean, I'm not gonna take my child into a, a retail smoking spot, I'm just not. But I don't want that retail spot to kind of become a runaway social club again, in the same manner that Three King DAB did. So I guess that's what I would ask, is legislation that kind of keeps that from happening, allows retail to do what they, they've been doing, but keeps it from being social.
A point I think maybe, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's Councilmember Wooden.
I just, I'm agreeing with Tracy that I, I believe that, and I didn't wanna make a definition between tobacco and vaping, because they're both prohibited under this. I guess what I'm saying is that I believe that there's a discussion to be had for the benefit of not allowing testing in the retail tobacco businesses, and that moving number four to the prohibited areas. But I don't know if you have something else to...
The chief and I, and I apologize, we're, we're having a, but sometimes you have to. And the, the point he makes, and I think it's a good one, is, and you can still make that change. I mean, you make that change, problem solved, you just don't have the concern. There may be two other ways you could do it, which are maybe a little more subtle. You could leave retail tobacco business where it is as exempt, but then be very clear that tobacco doesn't include marijuana. And, and we'd have to adjust the definitions a little to be sure of that. But the other way to look at it, I think, is, okay, fine, retail tobacco business, you're in the prohibited category, no smoking there, under the theory that the, if someone wants to really smoke in a retail tobacco environment, you go to a cigar bar, and that's really where you smoke. You don't really go to the store that sells, I mean, a legitimate tobacco store frankly is not a place where you go to even test, frankly. You know what you wanna buy, you go, then you buy it. If you wanna go enjoy it with the company of others, you go to, you know, a cigar bar. And I, it's the council's kind of policy choice, but if one of the things you're concerned about, and I think you should be, is we don't want to unnecessarily interfere with reasonable retail business expectations of businesses and their customers, both of whom are consenting. My suspicion is that, that there isn't gonna be a lot of heartache and people wanting to smoke in a retail tobacco store. That's, you go to a cigar bar to do that. So that's an easier solution than the definitional one I described about distinguishing marijuana from tobacco, and kind of looking through the whole ordinance to make sure we don't trip up on that.
Mr. Starker?
In looking at your definitions, a cigar tobacco bar means a bar. So I look in the paragraph above, and a bar means any area that is operated and licensed under Article 47 Title 12 CRS, primarily for the sale and service of alcohol beverages. Are you, are you indicating that a cigar bar is primarily a bar that serves alcohol? Or does that need a little more work?
I don't think so. The, the cigar tobacco bar is really a subset of bar. I mean, that's the way you apply it, it truly is. And you have to generate at least 5% of your total annual sales, or $50,000, from onsite sale of tobacco products. And for a regular bar, that's really hard to do.
Well, I can get you that, but if, if a cigar tobacco bar means a bar...
Right.
What is a bar? I go to the previous paragraph, and a bar is something that serves alcohol.
Yes.
It doesn't, to me, say that it's a subset of a bar. It is a bar.
Uh huh.
Because it says it is a bar, it means it's a bar.
Well, maybe, maybe I'm missing the question, but, but those two definitions read together. Bar is the general term, and cigar tobacco bar is a form of bar, but it is one that has these characteristics. So if you've got 100 bars out there...
In addition to serving alcohol?
Yes. It's a bar that doesn't also...
Okay. So in order to be a cigar tobacco bar, you must serve alcohol?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to be clear on.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I didn't see that coming.
We, we have a couple of questions.
So that's, so that's different than a cigar vendor?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly right, yeah. Cigar vendor would be the retail tobacco store we've been talking about.
We still have a couple of questions up in the air. One of them is a 15-foot, or 20-foot, or 25 patio, as well as the fact that allowing smoking in a retail establishment that sells tobacco products. So let's not forget that. And Mr. Urban, you have a question or a comment?
I think the, the point with respect to the tobacco retailers is that there are consenting adults. If you apply to work at a, a retail establishment that solely sells tobacco, it's pretty clear what's gonna happen in that establishment, that you're gonna come in contact with tobacco, you're going, it's just the nature of the business in literal form. So I would be okay with individuals smoking in that retail establishment relative to that purchase of that, and then leaving. I'm very, as Councilmember Lingwell indicated as well, concerned about this instance where we start seeing situations where individuals are going to a specific location to smoke marijuana, and then get in a car and leave. Or, or smoke in any sort of public social setting concerns me, just in, for a number of safety reasons. So whatever we can do to, to prevent that, I wanna make sure that we, we come up with the best way to do that. So a retail tobacco store is only allowed the, the smoking or the vaping of products that are sold there, that you can't bring something on-site. And then I guess one of my questions is, can a marijuana dispensary apply to be a tobacco retailer? So then you allow smoking in that, and then you can't tell which is marijuana and which is tobacco?
Okay.
Well... Or can we tell, can we tell marijuana? I'm not trying to give anybody any business plans here, I'm just trying to think through...
Right.
Can we prevent a marijuana dispenser from becoming a retail establishment for tobacco, to prevent them from being able to smoke on-site?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm certain that you can. I'm trying, there are several things going on here. It seems to me that if, if you, maybe the decision tree ought to be, if you move, if you, if you decide to move retail tobacco businesses into the can't-smoke-there category, then you're done, because you are. I'm not saying that's what you should do, but to make it easier for me to figure out what to do, it would be good to find out that question from the council. And if you give me a consensus on that, then I'll know. And if you give me a consensus on that, then I'll know what to do next. If you say, don't move it into the prohibited category, then I agree, we'll have to get into the business of defining tobacco separately enough from marijuana that the consequences you're concerned about and Councilmember Wooden is concerned about don't happen. I, I follow that.
Okay.
So, so at the, it would be helpful to me to, to at least get a sense of the council on whether retail tobacco businesses, now that we kind of have a sense of what possibly could happen there, should be in the prohibited category.
Are you on that subject?
Yes, that's what I'd like to propose. I'd like to propose moving number four, any retail tobacco business, to the prohibited category. And then that will hopefully prevent something similar to Three Kings happening again, and hopefully free up our police department from, if there are calls to certain tobacco retail stores, that they're not worrying about what are, what is inside of the vaping mechanism. Is it tobacco? Is it an e-cig? Or is it marijuana? So that is what I am proposing, moving retail tobacco businesses to the prohibited category, and that if they would like to test anything from that store, that they can go outside at the 15-foot distance and test it.
Okay. Do I have any other comments on that consensus or wishing to join in? Ms. Davis, were you?
I was just going to comment that, you know, I would agree with moving towards that. And, and I know, you know, based off of what the chief said was that, it's not that, like it happens that often. I can't imagine people going into a retail tobacco place saying, let me test this out. And, you know, I don't think it probably happens that often anyway, so we might be, you know, but I'd rather be safe and be a little bit, you know, more defined. And I don't think, again, it's happening that much that we'd have an outcry of folks saying, this is how I get 90% of my business. I just don't think it happens in a retail store. I don't know, I don't smoke.
I think that was the morphing problem, was more that it morphed into something else.
Yeah, so, so I completely agree with Ms. Wooden.
All right.
And if I can just, just maybe add to the discussion, hopefully not, not confuse it anymore. There are only one or two businesses, and I, and I should have looked this up before tonight's meeting, that truly meet the definition of a tobacco business. This is li, this is like cigar world, where, where you have a business, its sole focus is tobacco. It's not like going to 7-Eleven, it's not like going to the Phillips 66 or a Conoco store. This is a business, I mean, if you look at the detail of the code, that is primarily for the sale and manufacture promotion of, of tobacco, tobacco products, or smoking devices or accessories. There's nothing that's contemplated in the tobacco business that has to apply specifically to marijuana. I think that, you know, it, it would be a wise choice to, you know, to clarify that and prohibit marijuana and keep it strictly to tobacco, but, you know, I, I think it's from, from the perspective of police officer, I think it's pretty clear in regards to what we can or can't do in regards to, we can certainly, if, if it's council's direction, move it to the prohibited, but I only think that we have one or two businesses, and I think one of them may have closed, it was over in Youngfield, so I think there's one on Wadsworth, at all 70 that, that might be, that might be the other one I'm thinking of. It's strictly tobacco, it's all, you know, in those kinds of places. But it wouldn't contemplate your 7-Eleven, you know, your convenience store kind of place, because that's not what their primary business is, so, just wanted to...
Ms. Langworthy?
I think it's not so much like the tobacco, so it's not the cigar worlds that I think we're worried about, it's the ambiguity that comes with e-cigarettes. The unknown of what is actually in those products is a bigger concern to me than really any retail tobacco business, because, I mean...
Okay, is there a...
I mean, does, I mean, by doing any retail tobacco business, are we really excluding the e-vapors then? Because if we're not, then that doesn't solve our problem.
Vape pens are include, are exempt in other, all other areas that smoking is.
It's all...
This ordinance includes that, vape pens.
It includes e-vapors as being exempt?
I mean, restricted in areas that smoking is also restricted.
Vaping, I made that point earlier, and I know it's important to Councilmember Fitzgerald, let me say it again, vaping is treated throughout here.
This whole thing as...
Same way as smoking, so you don't need to worry about that. I'm trying to, as you know, get to some direction, and I thought, but we've kind of lost track of, I think there was, was there a consensus there?
Wait a second, I got somebody, raise your hand over there. That's what I'd like to do. Can we get a consensus on prohibiting smoking, vaping, the whole package within tobacco retail stores?
Well, it's moving tobacco retail stores over to...
Into a prohibited category.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I think it was.
Before we vote, could I ask Mr. Dahl if, I hate to ruin this beautiful decision tree, but are you going to, at some other point, define cigar bar as being distinct and different from...
It's, it's defined. Cigar tobacco bar? That's the subset of bar that we...
Yeah, I got it.
...talked about.
Okay. I think I had a consensus. Do you want to raise your...
Was it to move the retail tobacco stores to the prohibited category? That was the question.
That was the question.
So what do people think about that question?
All right.
Do it, don't do it?
I have, I have enough for a consensus, all right.
Four of the group.
Four of the one, two, three.
Are you weighing in on that at all, or not?
Got four of six.
Four out of six.
I'm not voting with...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. So far, I've got four of six, I'll, I'll move that way, and...
One question I have...
That's what I'll draft.
One question I have is related to this, is there a way to make a distinction between tobacco and nicotine as it relates to these sort of, because I see two different styles of business. One is they're selling vaporizing devices and pens and juices and whatnot, and I see cigar shops. There seems to be two different business models. I don't see a whole lot of vape pen, I mean, I don't, I don't know, the last time I went into a cigar shop, but I just don't see that, I see those as two, just driving by, I see those as two different business models. Is there a way to make a distinction between those two? Because with a cigar, it's pretty clear, I mean, it would be to me what, what is being smoked, but with a vape pen, that's where the issue comes in, you don't know what's coming out of that.
Yeah. I, I think you probably could make a distinction. I, I agree with you, I just drive by, I don't smoke, so I don't go in, although it wouldn't surprise me if the, if the retail tobacco business thought, well, that's an increasingly big share of the market, I'm going to sell vape pens. And I'm not saying I have any basis for knowing that, other than being in convenience stores and seeing this stuff a lot more available, I think because it's popular, and if I'm in retail, I want to sell whatever it's going to sell. I think we could make a distinction. I, at the moment, I don't think we have to, only because of the consensus reached, and I'm aware of the fact that it's, we don't have all council members here, and things may be different when it comes to first reading, and that's the way it should be.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just have one more comment, that we're not prohibiting the sale of tobacco or the e-cigarettes, and we're not preventing people from using them or purchasing them, it's using them within the store itself. And that if they do want to test, they could leave the store and do the 15-foot requirement. So this has nothing to do with preventing anybody from selling or, or using any of these products.
But using, they can't use in those areas.
Cannot use it within the store. If they want to test, they'd have to leave the 15...
Or these public areas that you've defined also.
Correct, correct. So that's why I'm proposing moving number four, any retail tobacco business, to the prohibited areas. And then number five is the cigar tobacco bar that you brought up.
Well, you know, I think we did number four, I mean, I heard that that moves, so I will do that in the next draft, you see. Can I check the box on, on the two kind of highlighted questions?
Yeah.
The outdoor patios. I think I heard general agreement, but not a consensus to say outdoor patios, yes, people open those?
I'll ask for a consensus. I asked for a consensus that outdoor patios, with the permission of the proprietor, 15 feet from the door, allow smoking.
I thought it had to be fif, it has to be 15 feet away. There has to be a 15-foot, what you said was allow within the 15, but that's not the case. So after the, so at 15 feet, one inch, they can smoke, is what you're proposing.
Let me, let me tell you that the reason there's two questions here is because if you have an outdoor patio, by definition, the minute you walk out of the business into the patio, you're within 15 feet of the door to the patio, and there's quite likely a table there. Smoking allowed on the patio, smoking not allowed inside, the 15-foot envelope is unhandy to impose on, on the outdoor, on an outdoor patio where you're otherwise allowing smoking. Do you see the issue with that? In other words, if, that means now you've got an outdoor patio that's part smoking and part not. And the whole entryway issue is, as you know, to, to avoid having to run the gauntlet of smokers outside of the door to a building. And I'm not telling you to think about it in the same way I am, but that's, that's a, I mean, I think that's why you make that, if you allow it on patios, you allow it on patios.
That would be no different from the way it is now, though, right?
Well, the, the way it is now, meaning the current code?
Right now, and in conjunction with state law, smoking in the patio.
Right, yes.
So I'm trying to say, let's make this a decision with state law.
But what you're saying is...
Not the 15 feet.
Yeah.
You're just saying patios.
Not the 15 feet, meaning the patio, just patios, yes.
Yes.
And we'll take another consensus on entryways, yes, no? And I'm guessing you'll say entryways prohibited, you know, 15 feet from entryways from any building, you know? Why don't we combine those two consensuses and get them done in a, in one fell swoop? Will you add that? Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Fitzgerald.
Can we do them together? Let's just do them together?
Let's do them together, okay. Let me see if I can restate this.
Smoking okay on the patio, smoking not okay within 15 feet of the outside door.
Yeah, sold.
So if the patio is 15 feet of the bar?
They just need to say yes.
Well, let's make sure we understand it. So if the patio is 15 feet or within...
Doesn't apply to the patio.
Let me, let me restate it in another way.
All right.
Or I'll just say it again. I would like to have a consensus that we allow smoking on patios consistent with state law, which would require the agreement of the proprietor, and that we also prohibit smoking within 15 feet of the door, of the front, of the entryway.
Ms. Davis?
That's, I said prohibit.
So I just have a question, because this, I want to, I have a real-life question. So, it's been brought up once, Clancy's. So the way you get into Clancy's on both sides, the back and the front, is through the patio?
Well, that's tricky, isn't it?
It's still through the patio.
Well, let me throw, let me throw another wrinkle on this. Lake, the way Lakewood handles this in their ordinance is they, they allow smoking on patios, even if they're within 15 feet of an entryway. But if there's no patio, smoking has to be 15 feet away from an entryway, so that gets around this, this portion.
Yeah, because if you think of Clancy's, both ways, if you go in through the back or if you go in through the front, you go through the patio.
Exactly. And then a business owner could, on their own choosing, say no smoking on the patio. But Lakewood says, smoking is allowed on outdoor patios, even if it's within 15 feet of an entryway. But if there's no patio, smoking has to be 15 feet away from the entryway. That's how Lakewood handles it.
We don't let the smoking on the patio prevent people from being able to enter the place.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's how they handle it, because...
How's that sound, counsel?
Does that sound all right? That's what I will do. Any objections to that?
I think we got it. I see some heads in here.
I'm not sure that I would support it in a vote on the dais, but you have enough to move it forward, so I guess that's how it goes.
That's how it works at this level.
That's how it works.
I think I've got what I need, and, and I appreciate your patience in working through this. And actually, I appreciate your questions, because it, as always, I come in here thinking I've got all the details nailed down, and somebody asks a really innocent question, and I realize that they're right. So, you know, it's an iterative process.
Joyce, just, one more thing, I, I don't want to belabor this.
You do too.
But, the, the next, I, I've already put my papers away, but the, the very next item, as I read it, says that if one employee objects, it would be, the proprietor would be required to turn it into a no, no smoking zone.
No, I, I think that overstates it. I think if, if there's an employee in an area which otherwise allows smoking, and there, we now have a pretty narrow list of places where smoking would be allowed in an employment context, then you've got to provide a no-smoking area for them. That does not mean that one employee gets to say that the whole business becomes non-smoking. You've got to provide a no-smoking area. And that will be case by case, fact by fact, you know, if it's, if I've got a cubicle, maybe it's that part of the room, but it's something that employers got to sort of figure out. But it's not a, one person says it, and the whole business now is non-smoking. That's not how it's...
And that is, that was taken directly from state law, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was really a good question. Before I close the meeting, we have magazines here, 5280, which the city has gotten for us to, because we have two articles in here, one article on 38th Avenue?
Yeah, there's a couple of articles, there's one article on the Green Belt, and some of the...
Restaurants.
Restaurants that are close by, and then, then also just another article on some specific restaurants in Weirich.
Right. So please, these have been garnered just for each one of you, please each take one. And now I'm going to move to the last item, which is elected officials' reports. Do we have any? Mr. Fitz?
I would like to plead for help. We have a committee working to improve Discovery Park, and school is starting, and we need park stewards to work in teams for four hours a day, Monday through Friday, to, in a friendly manner, talk with the users of the park and remind them that the park belongs to everybody, and they should be courteous to everybody. And I have asked for help in a variety of different venues, and I am sorry to say, I've not received one single response. So I would like my fellow council people, if they belong to service groups or other groups, if you would please, please, ask for volunteers, and then contact me, because it's going to take about 10 people a week, or maybe even more, if we do this correctly. So I would really appreciate you guys helping with that.
I've asked Chief Brennan to comment on that as well, because I know you're involved with the program as well, as far as Discovery Park.
Just, just a little bit, so it's my understanding, and we'll be bringing a staff report, Joyce and I have co-authored a staff report on the outcomes of the Discovery Park task force. And it's my understanding from that, that they're going to, the guy and, and others are pushing the, the perspective of, of ambassadors. So when that park opens up, or gets busier, when school's in session, these, these ambassadors will simply hand out flyers and to, you know, the park users in regards to the rules and regulations, and they won't be there from the perspective of, of an oversight or enforcement kind of thing. So it sort of gets to the email that you saw, that I sent Tim, in regards to my concern about volunteers and training them, and making sure that they were on our SIRS list from a liability perspective. And it seems, and I, and I'm speaking for Joyce a little bit here, but my conversation with her at the end of last week, and her conversation with Guy, they were going to go just this ambassador route, that it sounded like they had some folks that would, would be there, that would simply be there when these students start to show up and, you know, hand out materials during those specific timeframes. The other piece of this, too, and we'll talk about it when we do the staff report, is, is that I have enough money in, in the budget, because we didn't hire all our seasonal CSOs, that we're going to be able to staff two seasonal community service officers... that we're gonna be able to staff two seasonal, uh, community service officers, uh, in our parks through about the end of November. Uh, so, instead of staffing them on the weekends, when we thought we were gonna be busier, uh, we're gonna staff them primarily, uh, during the timeframe that the neighbors and the park users complain, sort of the Monday through Friday from about, you know, 10:30 a.m. through school getting out in the afternoon. The other commitment that we've got from, uh, from the school principals' meeting with, uh, Jeff Gomez over at Everett and with Griff Worth, is they're gonna work with our SROs to focus more attention at Discovery to, to get kids that should be in class, that aren't in class, back into class. Uh, now, that obviously doesn't help us if the kids are from, you know, Green Mountain High School or Lakewood High School or, you know, Arvada West, but we, we feel that we'll be able to deal with, with some of that problem, and, uh, R1 Security has also agreed that they'll provide routine patrols, you know, of that park, looking for students that should be in class but aren't in class. So, we think we have a game, a part of a game plan. There's an educational piece, uh, there's a cleanup piece to this that, uh, you know, the, the staff report will, will address. But I, I think, from my perspective, I think the issue of, of the volunteers that we were initially talking about is, is sort of resolved itself, but it's something that, you know, if you want to continue to, to bring up and look into, we can.
I think we have it scheduled for August 24th.
Yes, I think it's the next.
To discuss this further.
Okay. Did you have another question?
I just wanted to comment on that. Uh, I've had a recent conversation with Guy, and we were, uh, working with your concerns about the SROs issue and the other issue. And, um, they had agreed to, uh, do sort of an initial uh, thing in which they would just hand out flyers and water with very little discussion and no enforcement. And then we saw a second, um, uh, way of doing these down the road, after people had had training and gone through the process, that was a little more intensive than just handing out water, but not including enforcement. Uh, only including friendly discussion. So, maybe we should talk about this.
Well, we, we probably should, because it's not my understanding of the conversation that Joyce and Guy had. Uh, but I think the bigger piece of all of that is, is we are gonna have seasonal CSOs. We are gonna have people that, that are trained in, in terms of how to communicate with people and, and how to enforce rules. And we're gonna be able to provide that coverage, which sort of takes care of that discussion around volunteers, and we're able to do that. And we're also, uh, going to bring forward to council a request for additional funding in the 2016 budget, so that we can have those seasonal CSOs working in the parks, those two, uh, that we only have during the summer months, just like we do with the code enforcement seasonal. So, it's about a $27,000 additional ask, you know, for next year. So, it, it, you know, it's my opinion that if we have those folks in the park when it's being used and, and when we're seeing these violations, and they have access to a police radio, they know what they're looking for, uh, you know, we're not putting citizens at risk or running a foul of somebody who is, uh, maybe not thinking clearly or under the influence of something. So, I think we can make it a win-win.
There was a cleanup factor as well. Are you staffed for that? I mean.
Well, it's not, that's part of what Joyce wants to look at, uh, in the use of volunteers, is to have frequent cleanups of the park, and she can speak to that next week.
Great, thank you.
I've just about given you the entire staff report.
Well, yeah.
Maybe we can pull it, I don't know.
When I was at Colorado State University, I ran a program called Positive Impact, which was a, a frontline of defense of students that would mediate between the police and students at football games. So, if a student was inebriated or, uh, was otherwise intoxicated, that student would, that volunteer student, a member of Positive Impact, would approach that individual prior to the police engaging them as a sort of a soft touch prior to the police getting involved. And, and it's some, some similar to that. So, I'd like us to look at how that was done in that, uh, respect, because that's a little bit more, um, difficult situation in a college football game than a public park, but it, it operates on the same premise, that you have some sort of citizen frontline of defense, that's a little bit softer approach than even a, a CSO maybe. Uh, so, I, I would encourage this approach. I just want us to think about, there's other models that have been done very similar to that. But one of the key things, and I think you're close to it, is offering the individual something, a glass of water. Uh, we had solo cups that they could pour their beer into, so the beer cans wouldn't go into the stadium. So, the, the solo cups were softer, so they couldn't lob them as farther. So, it was a way to, uh, offer them something so that it, that they had a positive experience with those individuals. So, I want to consider that possibly.
Well, one of the things that the principals and I and the SROs have talked about is how to get, you know, your law-abiding students, the ones that are in class, engaged in, in this. So, there's an education component that we can get the schools to help us with. Uh, we have positive students that, uh, you know, could help us with that engagement in terms of, you know, what that, what the perception is and how that's impacting them. So, there are a lot of things that are on the table, that are floating around, that, that we can discuss and, and look at doing. So, uh, you know, part of the issue, quite frankly, for me is, you know, from a training perspective, I've got one crime prevention officer who is stretched in a city that's demanding a lot of crime prevention services. So, it's how do I research this? How do I, how do I do this? How do I provide the training? Who's going to manage that? Who's going to provide that ongoing training? I mean, you know, it's, uh, you know, and I, and I'm, I'm familiar with the CSU program, and it, and it does require a lot of work from a training perspective. You've got to have the personnel resources to do it, so.
I believe, uh, Mr. Stark wanted to give a report?
I would. I'd like to do a shout-out to all of the organizers and the participants in the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival and the Carnation Festival Parade. It was, uh, I thought, a very successful weekend and showed our, showed our city well, and, and I'd like to express my appreciation. And I would also like to remind our citizens that this Sunday, the Pro Challenge is going to be riding through our great city, coming down 30 various streets, 26th and 32nd and 29th and, and Sheridan Boulevard, and a lot of good bicycle racing. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities to come on out and, uh, and cheer on the riders and see your other citizens doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Um, Madam Mayor, I have several things, actually, four things. I'll be really quick. There were a number of handouts that were received tonight from the library folks and the, did the survey people have a handout? Okay, I'd like to get copies of those. Um, oh, um, if, this is just a, I think you all know, but this is just a public announcement. Um, if you want to run for public office for council, um, the elected offices that are available, nomination petitions are due this coming Monday, August 24th at 5:00 p.m. Um, the third thing is just sort of a save the date, and I'm, I know council has, um, been told about this, but just publicly out there, if there's any boards and commission members listening, um, we have selected Tuesday, October 13th, um, as the night for the Boards and Commissions Dinner. So, you might want to mark that on your calendar ahead of time. You'll be getting an invitation, of course, but that's Tuesday, October 13th. And then, um, the last thing was just kind of a heads-up for you folks, because we were talking about, um, election calendar today, and uh, the election is on a Tuesday. November 2nd is the night before the election, is a study session, and you may want to discuss whether or not you're gonna have a study session that night. That was just a thought. Nope, I don't care one way or the other, but but I just wanted you to have that on your radar.
Okay, thank you. Our meeting has ended.